I'm recording now.
Because we're in a practice?
You can start.
It's recording, okay. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome our newest committee members, Lorena Lopera and Rafaela Polanco Garcia. We're decided to have you on board. We'll do a more formal welcome when we return from the executive session. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman. Mr. DeRouge.
Present.
Ms. Lopera.
Present.
Ms. Mercer. Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson.
Present.
We have four members present, so we do have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the school committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategic session related to collective bargaining with the Boston Teachers Union. To have this discussion in an open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. The committee will return to the public set at 5:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman. Mr. DeRouge.
Yes.
Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the superintendent and pertinent staff to log off from this public session and join the executive session using the Zoom link sent out by Ms. Sullivan. We'll see you in a moment.
Good live.
Great. Good evening, everyone. The committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session related to collective bargaining with the Boston Teachers Union. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on the Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. For those of you joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's meeting documents posted on the committee's webpage, under the August 4th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Capo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, and Vietnamese and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation globe icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Please click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, distinguished members. My name is Juan Bernou. I am the Spanish interpreter. I will be interpreting in Spanish for the newly elected member of the Boston School Committee, that is Mrs. Rafaela Polanco Garcia. I have the honor and privilege to do that. We want to...
Do we have another Spanish interpreter with us this evening?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will now proceed to do the instructions in Spanish for our Spanish audience. Muy buenas noches damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Randolph Dominguez. Voy a estar, voy a ser su intérprete simultáneo por la noche de hoy. Para poder accesar el canal de español deben de buscar, una vez hayan activado la interpretación, deben de buscar en la parte inferior de su pantalla un icono que es como un globo terráqueo. Allí van a pulsar e inmediatamente van a seleccionar el idioma español para escuchar esta presentación en español. Voy a estar trabajando con mi colega Luz, la cual se va a presentar ahora. Muchas gracias.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon, I am Luz Barreto Longus. It's a pleasure to work with you all and with Mr. Randolph. Gracias, thank you.
Gracias. Well, Haitian Creole interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sergio Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. Estoy en prisión, no voy a permitir a vosotros si vosotros mismo habéis un adhesión para su interpretación y nos mandáis, vosotros prestáis atención a todo eso que vosotros habéis hecho y que no te ha dado por capaz de clickear ese globo láctico y que está ahí, y que no puedes entrar en nuestra conversación con nosotros y que, y no olvides, y nos la ponéis a tu cuerpo y soy yo con un adhesión que os he hecho eso. Muchas gracias.
Good evening, everyone.
Can't hear you. Okay, we'll move on and come back. Will our Capo Verdeano interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josie Angelo. And together with Jose, we're going to be the Cape Verdean interpreters assigned for this meeting. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Josiane. Soy interpretante de Creole porque tengo acceso a interpretación simultánea. Nos clickean la icona de globo en la parte inferior de nuestro ecrán y selecciona Capo Verdeano. Si vosotros estáis usando telemóvil, nos clickean a tres puntitos. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Jose. I'm going to be the interpreter for tonight's meetings. Buenas noches, Capo Verdeanos. Mi amigo Josiane, vosotros sabéis que yo soy el comité escolar de Boston. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Anna. Terry and I will be your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. I'm Anna, I'm Anna, I'm Anna. 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 When you see the Earth, you just click it, choose Cantonese. Then you will be able to enter the Cantonese translation channel. If you use your phone, you basically have to click three points, point, point, and click it again, and choose more. Then you will be able to enter the Cantonese translation channel. Thank you. Now is your turn, Terry.
Thank you, Anna. Hi, my name is Terry. I'll be your Cantonese interpreter. Hello, I'm Anna, I'm Anna. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Maple. I'll be partnering with Tina to provide Mandarin interpreting. Good evening, everyone. Today, I will provide Cantonese and Cantonese translation. Then we will open the function of translation. Please search the symbol of Earth in the lower corner of the screen and click on it and select Mandarin. If you use your phone or your computer, please select the three points on the screen. It says more, then click it and find the translation function. It's also the Mandarin service. See you later. Tina?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tina, Maple's partner for today's event. Good evening, I'm Maple's partner. We'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Good afternoon. My name is Viet Namies and I'm the interpreter for the event tonight. Hello, if you need to communicate, please choose your language. We will provide continuous communication to you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight, and I will co-host with you.
Did you call me today?
Come on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our American Sign Language interpreters please introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Sharon. This will be interpreted in ASL. Stay in the main room, you will have access. I have two other colleagues. There's Dee. And we have Letitia. If you can open up your camera, Letitia? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. Thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We're delighted to welcome two new members to the Boston School Committee, Lorena Lopera and Rafaela Polanco Garcia. They were both appointed by Mayor Janey on July 22nd. Both Ms. Lopera and Ms. Polanco Garcia are BPS parents and native Spanish speakers. Ms. Lopera serves as Executive Director at Latinos for Education New England, the first Latino-founded and led national organization dedicated solely to creating leadership pathways for Latinos in education. She is a veteran of local organizations focused on expanding education access for Latinx and students of color, including Roxbury-based Solidad Latina, La Vida Inc., and building excellent schools as well as national organizations such as City Year and the Posse Foundation. Welcome, Ms. Lopera. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You just caught me before my daughter burst in the room. So we might have some Zoom bombers. But thank you so much for this opportunity. Good evening, and when I started this, I just want to start by thanking the school committee nominating panel for putting my name forward for consideration as well, as well as Mayor Janey for the appointment. I'm really honored by this opportunity. I care deeply about the Boston community and appreciate the opportunity to bring my perspective as a parent to this governing body. I'm looking forward to working together with Superintendent Casilius and other district leadership and really pushing each other to continue to work towards quality and equitable educational opportunities for all of our children. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're delighted to have you with us. Rafaela Polanco Garcia is an immigrant from the Dominican Republic who has a background in law and bilingual advocacy. Her active visit on behalf of the Latinx community in education includes working on the No On Two campaign in 2016, helping to pass a sanctuary school resolution and passing the Student Opportunity Act. Since 2015, she has served as the Director of Parent Engagement and Organizing at St. Stephen's Youth Programs in the South End. Her primary language is Spanish, and she will be speaking with us using an interpreter. Welcome, Ms. Polanco. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Gracias, muchas gracias, Ms. Robinson. I'm from Dominican Republic and I feel very honored and grateful to the chairman, Kim Janey, and the panel of nomination for having me designated as a member of this committee.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. My name is Rafaela Polanco Garcia. I am very honored and grateful for being nominated by Mayor Kim Janey and the nomination panel for having me selected as a member of the Boston School Committee.
The fact that I was chosen as a mother who speaks Spanish for this position shows that we really are working on a vision inclusive.
The fact that a Spanish-speaking mother has been selected shows truly that they are working to give us a seat at the table.
And this inspires a new confidence in public schools.
Your inclusive vision is inspiring a new trust of the schools in our city.
This is something unprecedented in Boston. And I know that many families, listening to me speak Spanish at the meetings of the committee, will feel identified and represented.
This is definitely something without any precedents. It's unprecedented in the city of Boston. I am pretty sure that the families, when they hear me speaking in Spanish, they will truly feel represented.
To tell everyone, the committee, Brenda Casellius, that I'm going to put all my heart, all my energy, to make progress and improvements substantially within what is the public education in Boston.
I'd like to convey this to the committee itself, to Superintendent Brenda Casellius. I will give it my very best, my love, my strength, my courage. So I'll be BPS family center, so that I'm here to commit to that, to be able to implement the changes that we're looking for to better the public education here in the city of Boston.
I think that every meeting of the public education committee is an opportunity to discover how is your school, how is the school of thousands, more than 50,000 students that we have in the Boston Public Schools. It's important that every meeting of the public education committee opens up an opportunity to discover, evaluate how is your school, and to maintain the confidence to come and express.
It is very important. I do believe that the meetings here at the Boston School Committee are definitely an opportunity, an opportunity to open a chapter in the story of development, an opportunity to be heard, to come here and to be able to hear each other here at the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome again. I will now like to open it up to my fellow members to offer brief welcoming remarks to our newest members. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say that this is incredibly rewarding work and challenging work, and I want to welcome you. And most importantly, if you have any questions, any thoughts, concerns, I know both me and my colleagues are more than welcome to talk to you at any time that it works for you. Please reach out to me by email anytime, and I'd love to have a conversation to share, respond to any questions you may have. And congratulations on your appointment, and I look forward to working with you.
Mr. DeRouge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to join in a brief, warm welcome to Ms. Lopera and Ms. Polanco Garcia. Given these adults, thank you.
Great. Ms. Marissa?
I want to say hello again and congrats. It was wonderful meeting you all in person, especially your families.
Wonderful. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And echoing the comments of my colleagues to Ms. Lopera and Ms. Polanco Garcia, Polanco, Polanco, excuse me, Garcia. We're delighted you have joined the committee, and we thank the mayor and the nominating panel for recommending you and the mayor appointing you. You will both bring needed and important voices to our collective work because only by representing all of the community of Boston and thinking of all 52,000 students that we serve can we do our job effectively. And so you have voices, your life experiences, your work experiences, your family experiences are all critical to the work that we do. And I personally look forward to learning from each of you. So, welcome.
Wonderful. And thank you again. We look forward to working together with you as a committee, and I've enjoyed getting to know you all already. Oops, excuse me, Ms. Lopera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say to Ms. Polanco Garcia that it's an honor and I'm very proud to have our language represented in this space. So thank you so much for being here with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So we are really looking forward to working together with all of you as a committee and in partnership with the superintendent and, you know, and to really get our students set up for success this school year. So again, welcome and thank you for your service, joining us. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes from the July 14th, 2021, school committee. This time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th school committee meeting as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Epstein.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved with one abstention.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Dr. Brenda Casellius.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for joining us this evening. I have a few updates before I get to the rest of our meeting. First, I want to congratulate our new members and appreciate the nominating panel and Mayor Janey and her team and all that it took to identify and interview and select our new two members. As I said a number of times, we know that representation matters. It's critically important in all that we do and that we have all voices at the table. While we're considering the important work before us, I'm thrilled that we have two BPS parents here. I'm thrilled that they both speak Spanish and that they represent their communities in such a wonderful way throughout the community and have been recognized and that their leadership will be absolutely wonderful to have on this committee. So I just wanted to congratulate you. I also, I think this might be the first time that we have had a mostly Spanish-speaking member, and that has been a wonderful opportunity for us to be, to grow and learn and to meet the needs of our students and families who do not have English as their first language. So welcome to both of you. I also would like to address something in the news today. There is news about my license, and I first would like to apologize to the school committee chair personally and vice chair and members that I allowed my license to expire. There was a misunderstanding between me and my team about the category of a temporary or an emergency license and emergency license that were given during the pandemic. As you know, when I came from Minnesota, I was a fully licensed educator and superintendent and have been so for 30-plus years. I intended to take the required exam during my first year. But again, as you know, we shifted to support our students and families in response to the pandemic. I devoted my full attention to mitigating the health crisis, and the license requirements were waived during the time of the pandemic. We're still in the pandemic. We're still mitigating the health and safety of our families and our children, and that is taking quite a bit of my time. But since this came to my attention on Monday night, the commissioner called me. I immediately called my team to check on this as a fact and have scheduled the test for Saturday, the 14th. I take this very seriously, and I am resolved to complete this task immediately so it is not a distraction. I'm in contact with the commissioner and his team, and we'll continue to keep you updated. We have a school opening just around in a few weeks, and we cannot afford any delays in ensuring the health and safety of our children and are making sure that our teachers have what they need and our school leaders have what they need and that there's clarity in that. So again, I apologize for this distraction. I will take care of having this test taken care of, and we can immediately resume business as usual. I'd like to, I'd like to also spend some time just recognizing an amazing superintendent of Boston Public Schools and his passing. I know that many of you are aware of Mr. Tom Pezzant, former superintendent here in Boston. He was beloved in this community. We're all very saddened to learn of his passing on July 23rd at his home in Boston, surrounded by his family. Mr. Pezzant was superintendent of Boston Public Schools for 11 years from 1995 to 2006, and he pioneered the sharp focus on curriculum instruction that our students are still benefiting from in 2021. Before his time in Boston, he was superintendent in Oklahoma, and he was also superintendent in San Diego. Schools, current superintendents, school leaders, administrators, and teachers are still inspired by his leadership, and there are just so many current BPS employees with such fond memories of their time working with Mr. Pezzant. Under his leadership, Boston Public Schools was a finalist several years in a row for the winner of the prestigious Broad Prize for Public Education. In addition, in 2004, Mr. Pezzant was presented with the Green Garner Award, the nation's highest honor for urban education leadership. We're all so grateful for his contribution to Boston Public Schools community. I personally got a chance to meet him at the Public Education Leadership Project with the Harvard School and was quite impressed with his leadership and learned quite a deal myself. And on behalf of the whole entire team here at BPS, I want to extend my condolences to his wife Ellen and all of his family. Next, I'd like to announce that we have done two searches for the Madison School Leader, and we will be welcoming all of our new school leaders a little bit later at a later school committee meeting. But we especially wanted to just speak with you today about our new leader at Madison Park. We have welcomed Dr. Sydney Brown as our new head of school at Madison Park. You know that Madison Park has been a point of particular focus for me, and I'm grateful for the team that worked to bring Dr. Brown to our community. This was a deliberate and thoughtful process that yielded Dr. Brown, and I look forward to formally introducing him to the school committee. He comes from us, to us, from Alabama, where he earned his Bachelor of Science from Tuskegee University in Alabama, and later obtained a Master's in Education from Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University in Normal, Alabama. Dr. Brown also completed his PhD in agricultural education and studies with a minor in administration from Iowa State University of Science and Technology. Among his many accomplishments, Dr. Brown has served as a transformational school leader at Anniston High School in Anniston, Alabama, has been engaged in educational leadership at both the school level and the college level. And I again want to thank Kevin McCaskill for his steadfast leadership and partnership in this endeavor. I'm thankful that he'll be bringing his talent and skills to helping us in BPS build out our vocational education, to broaden our sets of schools and to start earlier in the middle grades and create stronger pathways to vocational education, particularly at Madison Park. I'd like to thank Jim Rooney and the Boston Chamber of Commerce for funding our first search and the many parents, staff, students, friends of Madison, the alumni, and other key community members who helped in the search. We will provide a full update on our new school leaders at a meeting in September. Well, as you know, we had in-person graduations this past June. It was quite a, quite an event, and I just want to take a moment to recognize that we have also students who are graduating later this summer after their sustained effort in completing all their graduation requirements. BPS BPS is hosting a summer graduation for all students who have wrapped up their work. It will take place on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, from six to seven thirty PM at White Stadium. We anticipate two hundred students to graduate at this event, and I hope you'll join me congratulating students and their families and their teachers for this great accomplishment. There are a few high schools that will also host their own summer graduations, and we will have all this information up on our graduations page once the dates are finalized. BPS Summer Graduation began in two thousand and seven to celebrate achievements of students who needed a bit more time to complete their high school graduation requirements. Following our highest graduation rate on record in two thousand and twenty, we continue working to increase the district's overall four- and five-year graduation rate. The class of two thousand and twenty-one has encountered so many challenges, and we are just really proud of our students and their perseverance and dedication, and that extends to our summer graduates as well. So congratulations, congratulations to all of our graduates. Summer learning. The BPS Summer Experience will wrap up for most students this coming Friday. We've had a great five weeks of engagement, learning, and fun. I've visited some of our programs and seen firsthand the creativity of our educators and our partners. More than thirteen thousand students have participated in summer engagement throughout a wide range of programs, many of them run by our schools and many operated by our nonprofit partners. BPS utilized our full suite of outreach tools to drive summer engagement. School staff made phone calls. They targeted outreach to families to inform them of programs at their schools, as well as many other opportunities. Our communications office sent text messages and robocalls in our ten most commonly spoken district languages, and we produced billboards in multiple languages that were placed in strategic locations throughout the city. We also shared information on social media, in our family newsletter, and with public information officers from from fellow city agencies who helped us push out information among their channels. Over the course of the summer, students have engaged in physical activities, sports, arts, and academic acceleration. I want to thank our incredible teachers and educators, school leaders, and parents who powered our summer programming, and all at the BPS who made this happen. I'm so grateful to Chris Smith and everyone at award-winning Boston After School and Beyond for their continued partnership and expanding opportunity for our students. I also thank the Boston Private Industry Council and all our community organizations for their incredible support. As I mentioned during our last meeting, I have had many opportunities this summer to engage with families, and I've received some critical feedback on our summer options, and we will make sure that we wrap that into next year's planning and make some improvements, particularly around the hours before and after care and transportation that I have heard specifically from parents. I'm really excited about this next information, point of information, and that is that Delavern Stanislas has won the Shattuck Award. We are so excited about our very own Director of Transportation, Delavern Stanislas, who was the recipient of the two thousand and twenty-one Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award. Recipients are awarded by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau for their integrity, initiative, leadership, and commitment to the public good. Delavern has demonstrated all of these qualities, particularly as the transportation team has rallied and adapted to challenges presented by the pandemic. Delavern is a former BPS student and proud graduate of the Jeremiah Eberk High School. She's worked at BPS for ten years and fearlessly stepped into her leadership role in the Transportation Department in two thousand and eighteen. She's also a BPS parent and understands deeply the trust that BPS families place upon us to provide safe and reliable transportation for their children. She's worked so hard to improve the performance of our transportation team over the last few years, and I've detailed their substantial progress in many of my reports because I'm so proud of her and the entire team. She's just very loved and respected by so many of us here at BPS, and we are incredibly proud of her and happy that she has received this well-deserved recognition. Shattuck Award winners will receive their award at a ceremony at the Seaport Boston Hotel in October. Congratulations, Del, and thank you so much for the service that you do to our city of Boston and our children. Last Friday, BPS submitted our preliminary spending plan for the Esser Two Funds. As a quick reminder, we have already started spending Esser One Funds with expenses in PPE, Health and Safety, Summer Programming as part of our Return Recovery Imagine Framework. Esser Two is the next step and covers this academic year, while Esser Three will cover the following year. That's most of the two hundred and seventy-five million. In total, we expect approximately four hundred million in one-time funds, which, as we discussed, will be allocated to projects that support our overall budget and implementation of our strategic plan. We have been deliberate in our public engagement and have worked hard to gather feedback from our BPS community. We started with the Wiki Wisdom page where we collected information from teachers and school-based staff this past March, and we heard loud and clear of the need for additional support and funding to ensure students and staff have the time and the space to reconnect with each other and their learning. We heard from more than two thousand stakeholders through our community engagement sessions and public meetings hosted by the Esser Commission, and I'm happy to report that we have launched a student Esser Commission to discuss the Esser Three Funds. That's our Reimagine Funds, so that's going to be really fun to listen, to hear from the students in more in-depth on those investments. And based on those priorities and what we heard from students and families, teachers, staff, and partners, we will release the plan and our overall vision for Esser later this year. The plan open for, the plan opened for public comment, and we heard from nearly two hundred additional individuals who gave us written feedback. The proposed spending plan we submitted to DESI last week added detail to our spending priorities, which were driven by our public engagement process. We're committed to allocating fifty percent of the funding, which is going directly to schools calculated based on the student population that they educate. That means additional funding for students with special education needs and also additional funding for students who are low-income and students who are speaking languages other than English at home. School leaders have been working diligently with their school communities and their equity roundtables and holding their own public meetings to gather feedback so that they can direct these funds into their own specific needs within their schools. The other fifty percent is going to be allocated to address additional school needs, but may be funded through central office or partnerships that we direct to the schools. We are working with school leaders on reviewing those funding proposals as well, starting in the next couple of weeks. The majority of feedback collected, which helped our directed spending plan for that fifty percent focuses on three key areas and guardrails because we heard these are from the community, and those are social-emotional engagement and support, academic acceleration, and equitable recovery, and we have gotten a lot of feedback around facility improvements. As a preview for social-emotional support, we're proposing the funding be directed to supporting counselors and social workers to supplement the investments we have made through the BPS budget. For academic acceleration and equitable recovery, we're proposing funding to purchase access to district-wide technology platforms, funding for compensatory services for students with special needs, training and support for administrators and staff, additional staff to change classroom environments, and instructional materials and technology. This will be a sharp focus on academic literacy that our our school division is working on with our school leaders. And for facility improvements, we are already purchasing air conditioning units. We are installing our quality monitors, data loggers in our classrooms so we can keep track of our air quality in schools. We're investing in libraries and upgrading our access to drinking water. We'll submit an updated plan with specific spending levels later this month and continue to report out to the public and to the school committee. I want to provide a quick update on our work to find emergency home for our juniors and seniors at the Edward M. Kennedy School for Health Careers. As mentioned earlier, we have been working with the school community to identify a space for students and staff. As we know, space often presents a challenge here in the city. We announced back in March of two thousand and twenty-one that Wentworth Institute of Technology stepped up and provided space to temporarily locate our EMK students interested in in-person learning onto their campus. And they've, we've been collaborating them on a long-term prospect of a permanent home right there on the college campus. Very exciting. It has been a great partnership for the students and staff of EMK, providing them access to new classrooms and infrastructure, exposing high school students to college campus experience where they can interact with students and faculty, the access to technology and other assets there at the campus, and also begin to take classes. We're grateful for the leadership at Wentworth, and we're excited for their partnership. We learned this summer that due to the needed construction on campus, however, that an accelerated timeline for upgrades and limited time to plan for accommodations for EM community as soon as we originally hoped would not be possible. I met with the president of Wentworth this morning, and we are talking through the possibility of collaborating on a long-term plan. In the meantime, we've identified a temporary space for the two thousand and twenty-one school year for the two hundred students at the former Endicott School Building. This space, which is designed to educate almost four hundred students, is in the process of renovations to be ready for the students and staff of EMK in September. I personally just met with the EMK staff and parents today to hear their concerns with the emergency swing space that we've identified at the Endicott, and my team has been in regular and close contact with the school leader and heard many of their concerns about this temporary location, and we have continued to try to find other solutions, and we will still continue to try to find any, vet out any new ideas for alternative space. But at right now, the responsible thing is that we have to have a location this fall for them, and the Endicott is currently being prepared for them to to go into that space. If another option comes available in the next couple of weeks, we will continue to vet those as as viable spaces if possible. I committed to meeting with the school community again next week and give them an update on our progress. And we will continue to listen and and give feedback to the community and have ongoing dialogue with the community. In a moment, I'll turn it over to the team to present the back-to-school update. I'm excited to welcome students and staff back to school, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and look forward to seeing the smiling faces as we all launch into September. The school year starts on Thursday, September nine, for grades one through twelve, and Monday, September thirteen, for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students. As you'll hear in the presentation, we have taken no breaks and have been planning all summer to get ready for the new school year. We'll cover health and safety protocols, facility updates, and more on our operational readiness. We'll also share more about the efforts to ensure students are welcomed into a joyful, engaging learning environment and that their mental health and concern over the past year of pandemic are being addressed. Using some of the Esser One Funds just mentioned, we will also have additional access to counseling and other support for both students and staff. We want the message this year to be about joy, about community, reconnecting, and accelerating learning, recognizing that the past eighteen months have created challenges that will take far longer to process. And yes, there will be COVID protocols in place, but we want to make sure our focus is also on creating an excellent student experience for our students, also while following the best advice from our experts. To help paint the picture of how this school year will look, I want to present a hypothetical experience of a fifth-grade student who we will call Ren. Ren is dropped off at school early and joins the before-school program to connect with fellow students and school staff. During class, Ren works on reading in small groups with his teacher at a table right next to his friends, and yes, they're all wearing masks. At recess, Ren plays outside on the play structure next to the friends without masks. After lunch, the school social worker joins his class, and some classmates talk about how they're feeling about being back at school. Ren only uses a computer once during the day to use personalized learning program that develops his reading skills. At the end of the day, Ren gets tutoring with some of his peers in an after-school program. Ren then boards the school bus, wearing a mask throughout his ride home. As we resume in-person learning, working to ensure the health and safety of our school communities must be our top priority. Second, we will, we will support the cultivation of all students' social-emotional mental health, and of course, another priority for BPS will be addressing lost instructional time by ensuring every student is engaged in culturally responsive classroom and excelling academically, and we'll do this through our academic-focused instructional leadership. Working with our partners in public health, we want the top-line message to be that our best approach to a safe, healthy, and happy school year is masks, vaccines, and testing. Those are the three most effective methods we have to stopping the spread of COVID in our schools, and you will hear us repeat them often. I want to again thank our entire BPS team for all that they've done to ensure a safe return, a strong recovery, and the work that we're doing on our Esser Commission with all of our parents and our community and stakeholders and students and teachers as we look toward the future and reimagine what BPS can be. Madam Chair, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That is one to two questions. I would also like to remind BPS staff to also be brief in your responses. If you have additional questions, I'll come back and do a second round. If you have a question, please raise your hand or put the request in the chat. Okay? I'll start with Mr. De Arujo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, to your disclosure around your licensure, I have a few questions. One is, has the state granted you a further gray spirit to continue to operate as our superintendent while you take the exam?
I am in conversation right now, Mr. De Arujo, with the commissioner, and he's looking at that with his lawyers and and we are with ours as well. And so I will come back to the school committee about that. I will be taking the test within a week.
Okay. So so we may need to be prepared for an interim if that's not successful potentially. That, I guess that's more of a comment. We don't know you know what the result would be. And then, this is more a comment, you know, I think really a question for my colleagues that, you know, this is, I think this is a very significant disclosure. We evaluated the superintendent, and just from my my perspective, I presumed that when I read the contract that those requirements were met in terms of licensure, and and that that clearly wasn't the case. And did, you know, at what point should we have asked those questions? Should we have done our own diligence as a committee during the evaluation process? You know, clearly, we didn't do that, and I think that's a, you know, a very key piece of information. I understand the superintendent's, you know, response to that, but just as a committee, I think that's pretty, pretty fundamental. It looks like we missed that. We did miss that. So just a comment to my colleagues on that.
I guess I will comment to you about that. The licensure of all staff is the responsibility of the Human Resources Department. And so it was our assumption that that was being taken care of by them. They are the ones that would should have alerted us if there had been an issue. And since there was none, the assumption was that everything was in place as it was. So since we have just learned this issue, we're now taking the steps that are relevant to move forward. But I think, and I would agree with you to say this is a lesson learned for all of us that, even though there are assumptions, we should have a checklist that says are all of these things in place, and we did not. So, you know, hopefully, things can get rectified as soon as possible as we move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll go to Ms. Mercer.
Actually, Mr. Coleman raises his hand before me.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Coleman and then come back. Thank you.
But I'd much rather hear from you.
Okay.
No, I'm still kind of collecting my question, so you can go first.
Okay.
Thank you for the moment. And Dr. Casalias, thank you for your report and the wide range. We all appreciate the way in which Superintendent Paison set a, set a high bar for us all that we continue to try to reach, and I appreciate you acknowledging them. Very excited about the Very excited about the award-winning work in your transportation department. Those are very good things for us to see and learn about and speaks to the ways in which we're currently driving the district to perform at a high-level efficiency, as demonstrating a lot of the positive outcomes you shared with us today. I want to, you know, in the search for more coherence and efficiency, I want to lift up the report in the S R Fund, which, you know, is a broad, you know, it's a very difficult, broad decisions to make. I would appreciate it as we make those type of reports that we articulate the manner in which these investments are associated with which particulars strategic goals. And then we articulate that regularly, the same way we do with the equity impact statements. There are beginning to, we're beginning about policies. I would appreciate reports about particularly large funding decisions be really tied, showed. And this should drive improvement towards this goal, whichever that would be. And so build that discipline into our reporting. And part of that, this is, actually, it was a conversation I was having. As many of you know, I'm also on a school committee board in China. And the head of that board was discussing, having a conversation about rocks and sand in a jar. And if the rocks are important, i.e. reaching, closing the achievement gap, having high-performing schools, having high-performing professionals at all decks, and those are the big rocks that we really want to be focused on and give energy to and focus on. If we start filling up our jar with sand, for example, this would be my response to the issues of your certification. We did a deep-dive evaluation of your performance over the past year. And by and large, finding you performing at an effective level using the data we have at hand on your performance. Those are the rocks. The, your certification, which of course we want done, and of course, we're going to follow through. And of course, we want to comply with state expectations, is in my mind, the sand. And I don't want to, I encourage us to focus on the big issues that could drive improvement for kids. And, you know, be mindful of the sand. That's an important part of our foundation, but not overspend too much time on it. So again, I want to build some discipline around the manner in which we present our proposals in light of strategic goals. So we always have that in mind. And if we can't do that, then we need, then that gives us an opportunity to the school community to say, well, wait a minute. How does this really drive forward what we're trying to do? So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mercer?
Hello. So first want to say thank you for your report and just being open and honest with us about your license being expired. So my first question is, when it comes to the purchasing, their purchasing of the AC units, whether that be for all schools, schools without the HVAC systems, or select schools?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. We are purchasing them for all classrooms at all schools.
All right, thank you. And then, is the same goals for the moderate, for the air quality monitoring systems?
Yes, it's all classrooms. That's correct.
All right, thank you. And then my last question is in regard to the EMK school building and their location. So if they end up in the Endicott Building, will BPS provide safe transportation for all students? Well, that's the first part of the question.
Yes, we are working with the EMK students and the faculty around the transportation needs at the school.
And then the second half to my question is, will BPS aid EMK in keeping their partnership with healthcare facilities that they were previously in partnerships with before the move?
Yeah, that's our, that's our intent, is that they'll be able to keep all of those partners. I know that the distance creates a bit of a challenge for some of the partners because those are right in the community nearby. This is unforeseen situation with the pandemic, the building not being adequate before. So they had this emergency need to move. We were able to move them to Wentworth last year. But because Wentworth has construction going on this year, they're not able to accommodate them. And they have the return of their students coming up back to campus. It makes it just more challenging for us. And we have been seeking other facilities for them to go in some, you know, the only viable option we have right now is the Endicott to house all of them. But we will continue to look at options if other options become available prior to school start.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Ms. Blanco Garcia?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Gracias a Superintendent de Vrenda por su reporte. Me gustó mucho escuchar que escuchó los comentarios públicos para poder ver claras las necesidades, las necesidades principales.
Thank you very much, Dr. Casselius. I like very much the fact that you shared the public comment to be able to identify the priorities and the needs.
Me gustaría, nosotros sabemos que en Boston hay 125 escuelas, ¿verdad? Pero también sabemos que cada escuela tiene sus propias necesidades. Me gustaría poder ver la lista de las escuelas que ya han empezado a tener, a trabajar en cuanto a su mejora, a sus facilidades. Sé que ya dijo en el informe que estaban trabajando para las, por las mejoras. Pero me gustaría tener una lista de cuáles son esas escuelas que ya han empezado.
I am very aware that there are 125 Boston Public Schools, Dr. Casselius. I would like to have a list whenever possible to be able to find out what are the improvements or which schools are being taken care of at this moment, if that is a possibility. Out of the 125 schools, which schools are getting the improvements right now and what is being done?
I would be glad to do that. I will get you that list. I also need to make a clarification for Zara. That AC units won't be going into schools that have HVAC systems, though. So if a school has air conditioning, they won't, they wouldn't need to have them. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record.
Thank you.
I don't know if Polanco Garcia was finished. I'm sorry.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, do you have other questions?
¿Quieres alguna otra pregunta, Rafael? Adelante, continúa.
All righty, thank you. I want to, Ms. Lepera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Superintendent Casselius for that report. My question is, I think, a follow-up out of some of the questions that have come up regarding facilities. I understand that you mentioned the air quality monitors in every classroom. I believe that work has started this summer. Is that projected to be finalized before start of school? Or what is the timeline for completion for that?
I don't know if it'll be complete. Sam, are you on the call? Mr. De Pina, in terms of the timeline for finishing that? I know we started this summer. I don't think we're on track to finish prior to school.
Yes, a significant amount of the quality monitors will be installed before school starts, but there may be some that trickle into September. So our goal is to complete them by the end of September, the latest.
Great. And I think, similar to Ms. Polanco Garcia's request, if you can share a list of schools in which that's already been finalized, as well as the pieces around the HVAC systems and what is still pending, and perhaps which ones will be completed post-start of school, that would be incredibly helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill? No?
No, thank you. I thank the superintendent for report. I, you know, upon reflection, I will say I appreciate the superintendent talking about her licensing issue. It is a unnecessary distraction, unfortunately. And I'm sorry that there appears to have been miscommunication or misinterpretation of the emergency waivers versus the temporary waivers. I'm glad you are correcting this immediately. When we voted in June on your contract, you were in compliance. And this just happened as of July 31st, but it's something that could have been corrected ahead of time with proper information. I appreciate that, like many of our students and many of our other teachers, you have to take a makeup exam, so to speak, that I have no doubt you will pass with flying colors as you have been an educator for 30-plus years. You have your doctorate, you had your state superintendency in Minnesota. I have no doubt it will be passed. And you do have members of your senior team who are, do have their superintendent's license. So I'm sure Desi will give us guidance on ways to make sure that this is quickly taken care of. And that even as you prepare for the exam, I trust your focus will be on reopening schools, the protocols to keep our students safe, what happens with the last couple of buildings, Horace Mann, EMK, others that are focused on some big facility decisions that have to be made, that we all keep our eye on the ball on the most important issues, which is getting our 52,000 students back in school a month from now and getting their education caught up and moving forward in a positive way, even as we respect how important licensure is for all of our employees and trust at the appropriate time, we can find out from Office of Human Capital how we're doing on licensure for all of our employees. So good luck on that test. I have no doubt you'll pass it, and I look forward to this getting clarified as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Superintendent, I just have one quick question with regard to the S R funding. As schools are now receiving their allocations, will there be public documents identifying exactly what each school has focused on?
Yes, there will, there will be, there will, we'll have full public transparency on all the spending.
Right. And we will also know more and more in-depth what the dollars that the district will be spending on in terms of the types of programming, et cetera. I know one set of concerns I've heard as we provided the funding directly to schools that a number of folks have raised the concern that children who may have more resources also suffer during the pandemic. And so even though there wasn't a per-person allocation given to the schools, understanding how the dollars that the district will be spending will be to the benefit of all students irregardless of their, their needs.
Yes, Madam Chair, we will absolutely have that be part of the public record as well. What I'm really interested in doing, and I've been working with Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter and his team and Ms. Mitchell, Chief Mitchell, on her side on the S R programming, is to align all of that to the FY '23 budget so that the public can really see how we're using the $1.4 billion, as well as the additional S R investments to accelerate learning for our children and create a more equitable experience across all schools. And that's where you will see these investments go in the final installment of the $100 million three-year commitment that we received a few years ago to support the strategic plan. So I'm really, really excited about showing that alignment and being very transparent about that.
Yeah. My other question is about summer learning. I know that there was great intent for there to be many more students engaged and that this process started back in January at a school level. Have schools done their own review of what occurred between the intent and the outcomes in terms of, you know, how did they go about recruiting or making sure that families had plans? And what were the options when that did not happen? Because I'm, you know, I am thrilled for the nearly 12,000 students that were able to participate, but knowing that we had allocated at least that much more funding for another 12,000 that did not take place. And, you know, I'm hoping those dollars are available to be added to next year's plan, but that there will be a very significantly different process in order to make the summer work differently.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. And we will be working more closely with the school leaders on how to document their effort and their outreach. And when they don't get in contact, that they still document that they weren't able to get it. Or we look for, now we have family liaisons and social workers in schools, which will help us to really track down addresses or change of addresses. I do want to share that, you know, I do believe that the reasons I've been told by some parents that transportation was a barrier, that the hours were a barrier. And so I've already spoken with Drew Eccleston about summer school next year and addressing the issues of hours before and after care and transportation for our students. And then also looking at how do we do our outreach? We did a lot on the communication side and our school leaders and teachers reached out as well. I do think there's still a little bit of hesitation from many of our parents to send their students to school. I heard it today in my meeting with an EMK parent who was sharing his concern about sending his child to school and not, you know, and students not being vaccinated just yet. And so that's still, that's still a concern and could have also hindered some of our hopes for a more robust participation.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Derusio, your hand raised a second time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A few, few more issues and questions. So on the S R funds, just to put on the record again, maybe for the third time, Madam Chair, are we, we going to vote on this as a school committee at the September, September meeting on the, on the final plan?
Dr. Casselius, we talked about having that as a formal presentation in September for a vote. There was, as I explained to you earlier, that there had been a problem about the timing of shifting it from a report to a, to a vote. And so we were unable to do it, to get it onto the official agenda for this meeting, but do have the intention of bringing it back as a vote in September, yes.
And that will be an itemized list, then we will have, we will have the full complement of the review and comment because we committed to the 30-day review and comment. So, and we will make any amendments at that time to the S R report to the state if we need to make amendments, which is allowable.
Now, I'll just say for my colleagues that, you know, we've talked about this, I think, since, since I've been here in February, since the funds were available and that. Maybe we need a better system for when we as members, I remember our previous chair said we were going to vote on this to track the requests that we make and to ensure that those requests are actually followed up on in a timely way and then inconsistent with what we originally said. Because I feel like this, this one's kind of been, it keeps moving forward in different ways. And not, I think now it sounds like it will be consistent with what we talked about. I don't know if it was a February or a March, March meeting, and then some follow-up later. I will say also, just in terms of, Madam Chair, you raised the issue of the funding with, specific to the S R funds, I do have the expectation. And I said this, and I remember our former colleague, Dr. Rivera, said the same thing. And, and Dr. and Ms. Oliver Davelle said the same thing, that, that the intention of these S R funds is for the benefit of all the children of Boston. And that, you know, for me, I'm going to, I'm going to support something, as I said, and I'll try to dig up the transcript from way back when, that every family can say, you know, my kids went through the past year and a half, and now it looks like it's going to be even further with respect to the pandemic. These pandemic recovery funds, I can say, my kid got this. I understand that wasn't the case with the first, the first tranche. But my expectation is that as we review the final plan, that every child, every family will be able to say, this is what I'm getting from, from these funds. And so that, that's, I don't, I don't think that's a high bar. I think that's consistent with.
It's consistent.
Yeah, okay. Summer school, you know, I've been struggling over the weekend with this and throughout this process with summer school. And to be frank with folks, I feel like I've, you know, in a sense, failed as a, as a school committee member. I did read the journalists who wrote the articles, quoted different families about the shortcomings. I will say that a number of those shortcomings, I was aware of over the past several months. Not, not the specific folks that were quoted, but, and I, I thought I asked the right questions. And maybe, maybe I didn't ask the right questions, or maybe I didn't understand the responses in the right way. And I want to know, and kind of just talking out loud here as a school committee member, how do we ensure in our role, given How do we ensure in our role, given that we're not involved in the operations, where, you know, we're, we're asking questions, where, you know. Families, heads of school coming to us, so forth. How do we ensure that we're making the impact? I had an embarrassing moment where this is a month ago, I did get to visit some of the programs, some of them are excellent. And, and someone complained about transportation. And I said, no, 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 we're, we're providing transportation for every kid. And they're like, no, no, like, we're not getting transportation. And then, of course, I followed up and, and, you know, that. There was, there was only transportation for a subset of kids. And I, I don't know if I misheard, if I misunderstood, but my understanding from, from the beginning. Was that transportation would be provided for everyone, and I don't understand why that didn't happen. So as, as we reflect on not wanting something to happen again, where. It feels like we just, you know, we, we, we kind of promised the world because we had all these resources. And what we delivered, even if it was strong for, for the, the subset of families that were able to access it. There's, there's a real disconnect there, and I, I think just as, as a committee member, I, I need to learn, how do I? You know, how do I prevent that from happening if, if I can going forward on that? And then I'll also join my voice just to the folks, I, I've heard on, on the E M K issue. I've received written, written public comment from, from folks connected to the school. There, there is deep concern that the, the proposed location is inadequate for, for the families. And I, I, I trust the superintendent, you know, you said you're going to meet with the families and working together with them. I'm also concerned that this, you know, we're, we're in our, you know, it's August, August fourth. And, you know, this is, this is one of our schools, this is, you know, very important. As all our schools are, you know, these are, these are our kids, and we want to make sure that, that, you know, we, we, we have them in a, in a, in a space. That is adequate for them. So just add my voice to that, that I hope that we have a resolution that, that works for the families and the, and the schools there.
Dr. Casselius, did you want to respond?
I, I take that feedback, Mr. DeRouge, and appreciate you bringing that. Up and we are going to really do. An after action on summer school and just make sure that we do better next year and that we hold our, all ourselves accountable for it.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Lopera?
Thank you. Just a, a question around the example that you gave with fifth grader Ren. And as I'm thinking about. Perhaps some of the challenges that existed with summer enrollment. And thinking about reopening with out of school time opportunities. Do you know if all schools already have a plan, whether it is for before school or after school? And whether that information has already been communicated with families so that enrollment. Is already happening? I'm just curious to understand what the process is for. Recovery and acceleration in out of school time programming, whether it's in the schoolhouse or with community partners and what that enrollment process. Is given that sort of school is in the next couple of weeks.
That's a really good question, Ms. Lopera. This is something that was a number one ask by our parents was before and after school. It is very complex and each school will have a different plan. And so our school leaders are working with partners and also some of our. Folks in Monica Roberts shop around partnerships and trying to expand partnerships. I don't believe every school will have before and after care this year, but it's something that we're striving for. Over the next several years as part of our reimagined V P S. Really are very, very interested in having before and after school identified.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think for the schools that will have it, or at least had it pre pandemic. I, I don't think communication has at least begun to come out. I haven't heard any communication, at least as a parent in the system, and so I think as we're thinking about. Being able to get folks enrolled and. Just communication around that would be really helpful.
The, the more difficult piece of that right now is just with the mitigating of COVID and the partnerships in the buildings. That's the toughest piece that we're doing, and so we're just watching that a few more weeks with Boston Public Health Commission as well as. Working with our school leaders on how they're going to be using their funding. As we begin to design a, a more centralized approach to before and after school. So that it's not, some schools have it and some schools don't. So this is a challenge I put forward to my team. And how do we provide before and after school opportunities for students because truly this was one of the, the most asked for. Items to spend money on for Esser, and then if we create them, that we're going to have to create them to be permanent. Not where we have them just for two or three years, because families really need it all the time. So we need really big solutions and, and good minds to put together and how we partner to provide. For that before and after care for our families.
Thank you. Appreciate that concept.
And then make sure it's communicated through our family liaisons who we have now. Now that we have our family liaisons, and we're hoping many of them will be multilingual. That will help us bridge the gap, hopefully with making sure that parents have information on important programs that will help them out.
Thank you.
Dr. Casselli is just in a. A, a question with regard to what. Ms. Lopera just raised. Even if a school does not offer their own before and after school care. Will they be responsible for helping families to make that connection? So that there will be a plan per school irregardless of the school's personal ability to host it.
Well, this was one of my biggest learnings, Ms. Robinson, you know, is that you set out the expectation that there be a plan and. I was hoping they would be done in panorama. That did not happen, and so I need to ensure that I put in place. The expectation and the steps and the processes for the team. To ensure that we are holding ourselves accountable with regular checks. That we have collected the information and there's one place to collect it. We have the school leaders who collected in panoramas, some collected in Google Sheets, some collected in other systems. We need one system for how we collect that data so that then we can hold ourselves accountable.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll now entertain a mo, a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties. To make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time. But are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time. But may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have fifty four speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks. Or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name you use to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Only speakers who turn on their camera will be allowed to testify. Otherwise, speakers can submit their testimony in writing. We'll begin with our students. Starting with Yolanda Oliveria, Cindy Ramirez. Aralise Mejia. Martha Velasquez. Ariana Arroyo. And Sharina Castillo. If you can all please raise your hands in zone. We'll begin with Yolanda.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yolanda Oliveira, and I'm from, and I'm in eleventh grade at E M K Academy. I live in Brighton, and I'm here to represent E M K as a whole regarding the issues our institution has been facing lately. With finding a new building for our second campus. Knowing the district has proposed an option for us, the Endicott Elementary School in Dorchester. After Wentworth had, had to go through construction. I'm here right now just to. Tell as a, as E M K as a whole that Endicott is not the best option for us. It's not the best place to be allocated, and I will list a couple of reasons why. E M K needs a minimum of fifteen classrooms that can hold up twenty five students each.
You're muted? Or frozen?
Yolanda, we can't hear.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I think you were frozen. Please continue.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
None of the classrooms have interactive whiteboard. There is a limited storage space for books. And the building is not handicapped accessible as required by chapter seventy four. In addition, putting our students in Endicott Building is putting our programs and extracurricular. Activities into a threat of possibly ending. Endicott is not for the E M K community. Endicott can't take our E M K staff or students. And Endicott is not the best option for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Ramirez. Cindy, will you please raise your hand? Okay, let's try Ariales. Ariales Mejia.
Hi, my name is Cindy. My name is Cindy. I am a senior at Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. I am here to vouch for all the students, teachers, and staff at E M K. For more than a year, E M K has not had a building for the eleventh and twelfth graders. Our old building was not adequate for the COVID guidelines, so we were not able to go back. We thank Wentworth Institute for letting us stay there from March to June of twenty twenty one. Unfortunately, Wentworth will be under construction in the fall, therefore we are not able to go back. We have scheduled meetings with the superintendent, and only today were we able to hear back from her. We have been provided other buildings such as Endicott, but there are many reasons as to why E M K cannot go there. A couple of reasons are, there is limited storage. E M K needs fifteen classrooms, but Endicott only has nine. Many students relied on the transport near our old building that is not near Endicott. This issue about having a new building has been going on for a couple of years. But because of COVID, the problem has become worse, and we need a new building now. Our school is a health career related school and deserves to have a building with not only the right equipment. But where the students can be in a safe environment. As a student, I and all the students at E M K are very upset as to not being able to experience our high school's years correctly and in a new building. Where we can all be, where can, where we all can say it's our own. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ariales. If you're with us, please raise your hand. Should be followed by Martha Velasquez, Ariana Arroyo, and Sharina Castillo. If you're with us, please raise your hand in zone. I'm not seeing. Any of those students, so we're going to move on to our speakers who will be using interpretation services. We have speakers using Cantonese and Spanish interpretation. I will now turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony. Ms. Polanco Garcia will receive the interpretation via phone by our interpreter, Juan Bernal. Thank you. Our next speaker is Qui Kwan Ma, followed by Kelly Wang.
Ma Kui Ma White Kwan, my Kelly Wang. Okay, my name is Kelly. I'm representing the group. I'm here to ask Ms. Superintendent to utilize the SS fund. To fund our Quincy Elementary School, K one and K two, and add an extra classroom for S C I classroom. We don't want our students to have to go to a different school in order to get their S C I classes. So I will kindly ask the, Mr. Superintendent to consider my request. John Boy, Kelly? I'm the newly elected co-chair for DLEC. So my job is to help advocate many, my fellow. Many of my fellow. Parents on the team to advocate for an extra S C I class. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our Spanish speakers who will be using Spanish interpretation. Starting with Luis Lopez Osorio.
Luis Lopez Osorio?
que nunca nuestros hijos necesitan esa ayuda emocional que le puedan ayudar.
So now more than ever that schools are gonna reopen. I believe that my child and other children could um that help could be very useful to them. Now that they could receive the emotional support.
Thirty seconds.
Muchas muchas gracias por escucharme y espero que mis palabras puedan ser escuchadas.
Thank you very much for listening to me and I hope that my words are listened to.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Our next speaker is Lucy Perez.
Lucy Pérez. Lucy Pérez, por favor, identifíquese.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Lucy Pérez.
Good afternoon, my name is Lucy Perez.
Estoy emigrante de la República Dominicana.
I'm an immigrant from Dominican Republic.
Tengo dos niños duines en la escuela Blasto de ocho años.
I have two children at the Blasto School, they are eight years old.
Primeramente quiero darles las gracias a la alcaldesa por haber elegido en el comité escolar una hispanohablante.
First of all, I would like to thank the major for pointed someone that speaks Spanish to the school committee.
Con la cual me siento identificada y esperanzada que se abogue por los derechos de todos los niños hispanohablantes.
With which I feel identified and that now we will have a voice for all the Spanish-speaking children.
El año el año escolar que transcurrió fue un año difícil, eh, por mi razón de madre soltera y con un año totalmente remoto.
The last year was very challenging, especially because I'm a single mother.
Pero mi pregunta es qué expectativa tiene el distrito escolar para que los niños regresen de manera segura a los planteles escolares?
My question would be what are the expectations that the school that the school.
Mi niño van a la escuela Blasto.
Have for the children to return to the brick and mortar buildings in a secure in a secure way. My children go to Blasto School.
Nosotros como padres estamos pendientes a los presupuestos asignados a la escuela Blasto, ya que son necesarios para cubrir necesidades básicas del plantel escolar.
We as parents are very vigilant of the funds that are assigned to the Blasto School because they are very important for the good development of the school.
Como la planta física, ya me separé de puertas, ventanas, reparación de baños y una buena ventilación.
Especially regarding doors, windows, a very good ventilation and bathrooms.
He visto en la escuela aulas sin puertas divididas con cortinas para poder brindar una educación sin distracción. Tenemos que yo necesito que el distrito escolar tenga ojo y pueda resolver ese tipo de situación que existe en la Blasto.
I have seen at school some classrooms that are divided by a curtain. To avoid distractions, we need that the school committee takes action on these matters.
Pero sobre todo que tenga un plan diseñado para este nuevo año de seguridad, de transporte y sobre todo de un soporte extra que se llame asistencia socioemocional.
Especially regarding transportation, but not limited to all other services including social emotional services.
Thirty seconds.
Treinta segundos.
Ya escuché el reporte de la superintendente y me parece excelente. Vamos a ponerlo en práctica. Muchas gracias por permitirme expresarme y muchas gracias por tomarse su tiempo en escucharlo. Muchas gracias.
So I have heard the superintendent's report. Thank you very much. I do believe that it was a very good report. So let's get to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My next speaker is Doris Gonzalez.
Doris Gonzalez.
Doris Gonzalez, y por favor, te reportas.
She doesn't seem to be with us. Yanina Vanessa.
Yanina Vanessa. Yanina, ¿estás presente? Are you present with us?
Fior Ramirez.
Fior Ramírez. ¿Estás con nosotros, Fior?
Karina Paulino.
Karina Paulino, por favor, te unes. Te unes al Zoom, Karina. Miss Parvex is saying that she's there. Karina, por favor, empieza a hablar.
Hola, buenas noches a todos.
Hi, good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Karina Paulino.
My name is Karina Paulino.
Vivo en la ciudad de Charleston.
I live in Charleston.
Tengo un niño con una condición especial, síndrome de Down.
I have a child with Down syndrome.
Y asiste a la escuela Mario Humana Academy en East Boston.
And he attends the Mario Humana in East Boston.
Mi hijo hizo el año escolar 2020-2021 completamente de forma remota.
My child did the 2020-2021 school year mainly remotely.
Porque cuando se reabrió el plantel escolar, yo como mamá no me sentí segura de enviar al niño a la escuela.
Because as a mother, when the education came back to be in person, I did not feel sure of attending or sending him to school in person.
Porque a mi entender, la escuela no contaba con la seguridad sanitaria que se requería.
Because I was, in my understanding, not sure that the school was having all the sanitary and secure conditions for him to feel to be safe.
Para que mi hijo pudiera estar sano dentro del aula, puesto que las aulas no tenían una buena ventilación.
And I understood that there was not good ventilation in all the classrooms and that was my big concern.
Y también las aulas no cumplían con el distanciamiento social requerido por los CDC.
And also I understood that the distancing required by the CDC among the students was not being applied.
Otra razón era que yo sé que iba a ser imposible que mi hijo pasara de seis a siete horas en el aula escolar usando la mascarilla.
I also understood that it was going to be impossible for my son to spend six or even seven hours in the classroom using a mask.
Mi hijo, por su condición de salud, tiene su sistema inmunológico bien comprometido.
And I know that my son, because of his condition, has his immunological system weak.
Y me atemoriza que se vaya a infectar con el virus porque realmente no sé cómo su sistema inmune reaccionaría.
And I am very concerned that he could get infected with the virus, that he could acquire the virus, because I really don't know how his body would react.
Entonces, mi pregunta es la siguiente.
So this is my question.
Como ya sabemos, la pandemia no ha terminado.
As we all know, the pandemic has not ended.
De hecho, los casos han ido en aumentos en las últimas semanas.
And during the last few weeks, we can see that cases have gone up.
¿Cómo ha pensado el distrito escolar que van a reabrir los planteles escolares y qué medidas sanitarias van a requerirles a las escuelas?
Twenty seconds.
So what have the schools thought about following certain secure measures, sanitary conditions to open the schools so we as parents know, you know, what to expect?
Para que la.
Treinta segundos.
Y para que las personas para que puedan reabrir de una manera segura para todos los niños, en especial para aquellos que tienen una condición médica.
So that the schools will reopen in a safety, healthy way for all the kids, considering in particular the kids that have special health conditions?
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Gracias. That concludes our speakers using interpretation services this evening. I will now activate the interpretation icon. All interpreters will be sent to your channels and you can begin interpreting again. Thank you. I see that one of our students is with us, Ariana Avoyo. Ariana, if you would still like to testify, please raise your hand in Zoom. Ariana will be followed by Alex Fattato and Mike Heishman.
Hi, um, so I'm a rising senior at EMK. Um, what I wanted to mention was how the Endicott, I'm pretty sure it's a middle school, how it's not adequate for the eleventh and twelfth graders coming back into school. Um, so everybody says how like eleventh and twelfth grade, they're the most important years of high school and I completely agree because both eleventh and grade, eleventh and twelfth grade, teachers are preparing us for college and that that transition from high school to college is a big one and it's obviously very important. And I just don't think putting us into a middle school environment would be ideal considering that we have to go through that transition from high school to college. It's like going backwards in a way. And I just don't think it would, you know, be suitable for us because we're basically learning how to be like independent and like be more mature and go into, you know, college. And I just don't think it's right to put us into and back into a middle school environment.
Thank you, Ariana. Our next speaker is Alex Fattato.
Hello, my name is Alex Fattato. I am also from EMK. I am a student support staff. I currently serve mostly tenth graders who are now being promoted to eleventh grade, like like Yolanda, shout out to her. But I just want to reiterate what everyone else is saying. Um, we need at least fifteen classrooms that can hold twenty-five students each. At the Endicott currently only has nine. We are a school for health careers attempting to increase representation of black and brown people in the healthcare system, a sphere where people of color are underserved and misdiagnosed. In order to achieve this goal, we need access to spaces like science laboratories and a dedicated health assisting classroom. Endicott does not have this. We need a special education office to serve our students with IEPs and students on five oh four plans. The Endicott has no space for a special education office. There's no gym for physical education. There's no space for EMT level one program. There's no auditorium and no nurse's office. No space for our school psychologist. Our non-teaching staff, like myself, as well as our school partners would not have space. Building is not handicap accessible, which would further perpetuate the inequity for students with disabilities that is already present across BPS. As a BPS graduate, I attended Boston Arts Academy, which at the time was in a hundred-plus-year-old factory building where we were practicing in basically closets and we didn't have adequate facilities. I know how hindering, yeah, a building can be to the education that our students deserve. Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman. He'll be followed by Fierno Tall, Oded Pollat, Lisette Santiago and Kimberly Fraser Booth. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Heishman?
Am I on?
You are, welcome.
Oh, good, good, good. Thank you. Mike Heishman, Doctor Beja. Congratulations to the two new members of the school committee. Boston Latin School, the oldest school in America, was founded in sixteen thirty-five. Ever since, for Boston's wealthy elite, their children's entrance into BLS has been their entitlement. Thank you, Dr. Casellius. Thank you, school committee members. On July fourteenth, you said no to the corrupt behind-the-curtain threats of a few city councilors who threatened to defeat your budget unless white privilege at BLS was maintained. Instead, you said yes to greater equity and excellence for all. The choice that all of you made on that day was historic. July fourteenth should become a municipal holiday. If white privilege files a lawsuit, the just solution is to end the exam schools and turn them into lottery schools. No young child, no matter who their parents are, will no longer be guaranteed entrance into BLS. Privileged parents will need a Plan B, just in case their child is not selected in the lottery. If not BLS, you would want your child to attend an excellent school. Plan B is excellence for all. You should endorse Ms. Robinson's plan that every high school become a magnet school. Let's provide our children with excellent and meaningful choices. In June, the number of cases in Massachusetts, the Corona cases, shrunk every day to less than a hundred. However, there were eight hundred and eighty-three cases yesterday. We have to start pretending that the research hasn't happened. I recommend the following safety message. One, everyone in school and those who come into contact with our children during the school day age twelve and over must be vaccinated. Everyone must wear masks with clear filtered fresh air and be at least six feet apart. Schools must be safe before the reopening in September, almost done. Parents, caregivers must have the option for their children to learn online instead of attending unsafe schools since the virus is completely under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Lisette Santiago. Lisette? Can you please unmute yourself?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My apologies. Trying to get this up and running here, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisette Santiago, family liaison at the Edward M. Kennedy Academy EMK, a Hyde Park resident, a BPS parent and a BPS graduate. Just want to say thank you to Ms. Mercer and Mr. Diarrugio for asking those clarifying questions earlier. I also want to give a quick shout out to our students, Yolanda, Cindy and Ariana, that jumped us, asking all of these very important questions. My job as the family liaison is to advocate and represent our EMK community. It is my understanding that this position was created by the vision of the superintendent to point out the inequities and help facilitate a viable solution, and that's why I'm here today. There's a lot of frustration in the EMK community. Students, families and staff are extremely concerned with the option we've been given for the eleventh and twelfth grade campus. I am still trying to wrap my head around how this is the only option we've been given. Is this really the best that BPS can do? Out of all the buildings and locations in the city, the best that they can do is Endicott Elementary School for high school students. For those of you who aren't familiar with our school, EMK is a college prep school that focuses on the health careers pathway. As you've already heard, everyone is mentioning the limited number of classrooms, the lack of space for non-teaching staff, the lack of space for psychologists, a social worker, myself, there's no gym for PE class. But what I want to point out is the importance of the extracurriculars and the athletics. I feel as though if we are given this building, all of that will come to a halt. After the past year and a half that we've had, we've asked our students to focus on self-care, to walk out, to stay motivated and to, you know, to stay healthy. How are we supposed to do that if we don't give them an adequate building? I just, I can't believe that BPS would, you know, put our kids, staff and families in this position. Equality is giving everyone the same thing that is demonstrated here by putting us in Endicott School. Equity is giving everyone what they need. Equity is what's lacking here. What will move this conversation forward along is having a conversation about equitable options. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Fraser Booth. She'll be followed by Christina Biggins, Angela Cappucci and Amy Wyatt.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Fraser Booth. I am an ELA and advanced placement teacher at the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. Since I joined the staff in two thousand and three, we have been in inadequate temporary housing and when the student body doubled, we split into two campuses. The saving grace has always been our location. Our proximity to the Avenue of the Arts portion of Huntington Avenue led to our developing strong partnerships with the YMCA for Athletics, the Huntington Theater for Theater Coaching, the Museum of Fine Arts and the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum, which enhances our humanities and language curriculums. Our proximity to rapid transit gave easy access to after-school partners, notably Brigham and Women's Hospital and Mass General. Our ninth and tenth grade campus was within walking distance or stops away on the Green Line. I appreciate committee member Zyra Mercer's raising these concerns during the earlier Q and A session. I'm not convinced that walking and rapid transit are easily replaced. A move to McClellan Street would isolate our students from our students from these riches, not only removing easy access to partner organizations, but also lengthening the time siblings would need to get to younger students after school or for students to meet peers to collaborate in after-school athletics, clubs and student council. It would limit our access to Partner A two six Boston, which serves both campuses with writing support and pathways for students to publish their work. EMK works hard to develop cohesiveness between two campuses, but this distance would create a staggering separation. You will hear from my colleagues that the Endicott is just too small for our largest students, has insufficient space and has limited meeting as well as storage space. With too few or even the bare number of classrooms, it will also prohibit prohibit flexibility in scheduling elective classes. At a time when many of our students have been away from in-person learning for a year and a half, placing students in a space like the Endicott would hinder our ability to meet students' emotional needs and create obstacles as we strive to meet our students' academic needs, priorities the superintendent articulated earlier in this meeting. While we have been assured that this is a temporary issue, our seniors don't have time to wait one more year for a solution. I implore you to prioritize finding a way to reunite our school under one roof and short of that, finding a way to maintain the crucial connections between our two campuses until EMK is reunited. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Biggins.
Hi. Hey, Christina Biggins, I am a parent of a senior at EMK and I reside in Chasso. I am trying to advocate for the EMK staff and students because this Endicott school at the last minute, which it was very much the last minute. I've tried with the parent council at the media to reach out to find out where are the seniors and the juniors going to be having their place of education. I mean, everything needs to be safe, equity, all that right now. And you're focusing on that, but the school doesn't have a place and that is part of it. That is a big, big part of it. So just like everybody's saying on here, this is a great school that should not be left on the back burner. It's, I think it's the pretty own health careers school in Boston right now. And we need more instead of less. It seems like we're going backwards and not forwards and with all this funding going on, I really hope that there's enough funding in here. I mean, temporarily, they need help right now for the juniors and seniors and Endicott is not the answer. It's just not. It seemed like a quick solution, like you just picked the building out of nowhere and it's not okay. Like of all areas, like everyone mentioned, the building is not adequate. There's not enough rooms. The staff and the building isn't going to even be ready in September and they're talking about putting trailers out there. You're going to put my daughter in a trailer? Like it would COVID, rising the numbers and everything? I think there should be also options come in September where everything is a big question. Like, um, remote learning should still be an option right now, especially with EMK. Because I truly do not want to send my daughter to this Endicott school and you're going to cram kids in smaller classes when children have IEPs and they need to be in smaller classrooms, not crowded classrooms. And I just want to advocate for EMK and the long term, they still need a building for everybody. So thanks for listening. And I really hope this is on the agenda, even if the superintendent doesn't have a license in the next ten days. Who else is in charge if we have to wait ten days for her to actually do anything? There's ten days right now where I'm questioning who is going to be doing something about this.
Thank you, Ms. Biggins. Our next speaker is Angela Cappucci.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Angela Cappucci and I am very proud educator of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers for about eighteen years. So I always call EMK my home and they just, it really hurts knowing that my home is going to go to a shelter, basically. And one of the things I don't want to repeat what my previous colleagues and students had mentioned because you are all aware of that, but I do want to mention is why was EMK not included in the Bill BPS plan if everybody knew that we needed a building for many years? So that is my question and I just really want to echo Ms. Biggins. That I don't want to see my students in trailers. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Wyatt. Amy Wyatt?
Yep.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Oh, can you guys see me and hear me? Okay. Thank you for, um, thank you for having me. Uh, my name's Amy Wyatt and I am the, uh, one of the two co-chairs of the EMK Parent Council. I live in West Roxbury and our son Renee is a rising 11th grader at EMK. And, um, me and my co-chair were, um, you've heard from us already. We did send a letter to the school committee via the chairwoman, Jerry Robinson, back in mid-July. And, uh, we've also been in monthly meetings with the superintendent and her staff since March on this issue. Um, so, or I should say with the superintendent's staff. And then today we met with the superintendent along with approximately 60 members of the EMK community, students, staff, board members and parents. And, um, I also would like to thank Mr. Mercer and Mr. De Rojo for asking about EMK. Um, so basically I just want to focus on mostly on the, the partnerships that the Endicott School would, um, would force into, if not holding pattern, possibly put them at risk. Um, on this call earlier this afternoon, it was mentioned and discussed that the school's partnership with the Huntington YMCA, uh, where the students currently attend for gym class could be, uh, would be infeasible. The school, the distance is about 3.5 to four miles from the Endicott Elementary Space.
20 seconds.
Um, okay, thank you. And the health, um, the health assisting, the EMT program instructor did, um, mention, uh, which is one of the health assisting classes that the Endicott has no facilities to offer that program, which is one of the main reasons our son wanted to attend EMK. And is very excited about. And finally, the health director said that, uh, health partnerships director said that many of the partnerships with the hospitals, academic and otherwise would could be potentially at risk. Um, thank you so much. There's plenty to say, but, but many of the other parents and students have said it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Baumgarten, followed by Lauren Lopez, Siobhan Dooling, Frank Duncan, Allison Mosher and Jaclyn Roach. If you could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Christine?
Hi. Uh, my name is Chris Baumgarten. I've been a proud Boston public school teacher for 27 years. I'm a proud EMK teacher as well. I just want to mention, like everybody has the inadequate space at the Endicott limits our students' access to essential differentiation. The Endicott School does not support the number of course selections normally offered to our 11th and 12th grade students. For example, we have about 60 students who would like to take AP Language or Composition next year, but the space at the Endicott does not allow us to have five sections of AP Language or Composition, thus limiting access where some students who desire the course cannot have access to the course. We're in a similar situation with calculus where we have about 15 students who are ready for calculus. But because of the limited space at Endicott, we cannot offer a calculus course to just 15 kids. So they would have to take a different type of math. It is not a matter of just an uncomfortable or an unwanted space. It's a matter of equity and access. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Lopez.
Hello. My name is Lauren Lopez and I am a community partner of the EMK. I work with 826 Boston, a nonprofit writing tutoring and publishing organization. And I have been their writer's room coordinator for the last three years. The writer's room is a dedicated classroom within a Boston Public School building and the program fosters a culture of creativity and writing for the entire school. Having a dedicated room for students to visit is an essential part of the program. The addition of a room in a school where students can get individualized support on writing assignments, meet for after-school clubs and attend special events featuring authors, community activists or local artists gives the EMK a third space for students to be themselves. In addition to the lack of classrooms for students, there is no space at the Endicott for non-teaching staff and school partners. During my first year of the program, I saw firsthand what it was like for students to be able to claim that space as their own and allow their identities as writers and otherwise to grow to a potential they never knew was possible. Because of the pandemic, most students at the EMK have not been able to experience this aspect of programming in person. And because the Endicott building is far away from where the rest of the student body resides, the potential for students and staff to come together as a full school is nearly impossible. A space with a room for programs like these is essential to how the EMK community grows and connects together. And we need a building that will reflect that need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Siobhan Dooling.
Sorry about that. First, I want to thank you for prioritizing the social, emotional welfare and mental health of Boston students as they return to school. As we know, and as we've heard tonight, the past year has not only been difficult, but traumatic for a lot of our students. And EMK has an incredible support staff that is ready and eager to help our students recover from this past year. The space at the Endicott does not allow our phenomenal guidance, social work and family liaison teens to do their work, which requires private confidential space. So please consider helping us to find an appropriate space for our 11th and 12th graders. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Duncan. Frank, if you're with us, please raise your hand virtually. He'll be followed by Allison Mosher, Jaclyn Roach, Mobolaji Omisor, Thomas Price and Sharon Hinton. If you can all please raise your hands. I'm not seeing Frank. Allison Mosher.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Allison Mosher. I'm an instructional coach and former history teacher at the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. This is my 15th year at EMK. As has already been discussed, Wentworth is going through construction in September and they can no longer house our upperclassmen next year. The district has suggested that the Endicott Elementary School is a viable solution and I'm here to say that our students deserve better. The BPS mission states that every child in every classroom in every school gets what they need. Our 11th and 12th grade students will not be getting what they need if we are forced to move our upperclassmen into the old Endicott. I don't need to repeat all that my colleagues, our students and our parents have already mentioned about why Endicott should not be an option. We are not setting our students up for success. And after the year we have had, our students more than ever need a space conducive to learning, a space conducive to healing and a space conducive to meeting the BPS mission of every child in every classroom in every school getting what they need. In the short term, BPS needs to provide a temporary building that has the classroom space we need. It needs to be located close to the medical facilities that the students need to access and it needs to be close enough to our ninth and 10th grade campus. In the long term, EMK needs a new 21st century school building to finally bring our ninth through 12th grade students back together under one roof. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jaclyn Roach.
Sorry about that. Hello. My name is Jaclyn Roach. I live in Alston and I manage the Big Brothers Big Sisters Program at EMK. I'd just like to reiterate and expand upon the comments made by my colleagues tonight that the proposed relocation of EMK to the Endicott Building is unrealistic, unfair and unjust for our students, staff and families. I'm entering my fourth year as a school partner at EMK and I've heard hopeful talk of moving to a more appropriate equitable building since day one. As my colleagues have stated tonight, due to concerns around classroom space, health, safety, academics and the accessibility of athletics and extracurriculars, the proposed move of EMK to the Endicott not only continues the inequity EMK has been facing, but in fact would severely exacerbate it. Part of my role is to work with students on building their resumes and accessing college and other post-secondary pathways. I've seen how incredibly passionate and committed our students are to pursuing health careers and how eager they are to take advantage of the numerous healthcare partnership opportunities EMK has cultivated, such as the health-assisting EMT and CNA academic pathways, as well as internship programs at local hospitals. These partnerships provide invaluable enrichment experience to our students and set them up for professional success post-graduation. To relocate EMK's campus to an inaccessible location such as the Endicott could cut these students off from these opportunities and would be extremely unjust and inequitable. Now more than ever, we should be supporting our students' academic, professional and emotional growth and development. And the Endicott is simply not a suitable avenue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mobolaji Omisor. Please raise your hand if you're with us, followed by Thomas Price, Sharon Hinton, Domingo Storosa, Sean Cray and Vicky Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mobolaji Omisori. I'm a co-chair of EMK Great Council. I'm also a parent of a 12th grader right now. I, I would like to say thank you to the superintendent and all the BFC committee. But this is not my first time of coming to the, to the meeting. We had the meeting last year and where we came out was World War II. We are grateful for the superintendent for World War II. We're grateful for everything you've done so far, but that is not the best. My concern is the psychological effect of taking us to World War II and the children are all settled thinking they have a, a school. And now you're taking us back to zero level. What is what doing is what doing well? Already we have a stage that there's going to be an issue and we brought it up in March to discuss with the assistants to pretend that knowing for whether the assistants.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I think we lost her.
Okay, so I will please ask those on board, the committee, not just the superintendent. Everybody should be on deck at this time. It's not just the superintendent because EMK is the best science school in Boston. And I feel by now we should begin to promote the school. Let's say for instance, what will happen if we have an emergency and there is no nurse? There's no nursing room. There's no place to put our children. Have you ever thought of that? There are so many issues on ground at the moment. Psychologically, socially, so many things to be considered. And giving our student a good classroom is the best we can think about right now. So Endicott is a no-no for EMK. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Price.
All right. Hello, can you guys hear? All right. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Price. I am a teacher and coach at EMK. I've been at EMK for eight years now. I also am a proud Boston resident and parent. Um, I prepared a few notes I wanted to share with the committee this evening. So go ahead and begin. As an educator, a longtime resident of Boston, I believe it is the city's duty to provide the appropriate resources our students need in order for them to reach their full potential. I don't have time tonight to get into specific data or call upon our countless number of successful students we have produced, many of whom work within our city's thriving healthcare fields, but the numbers don't lie. And our track record as one of the best high schools in the city speaks for itself. We want to continue on this path, but we need your help in finding a suitable place to call home. The last year without a doubt has been a difficult one for all of us, but especially for the EMK community. EMK has been unfairly bounced around and relocated from school to school without an adequate place to call home. Our students and staff have shown tremendous resolve in the face of these difficult circumstances. And to put it bluntly, we deserve better. In my opinion, as an educator and city of Boston resident and parent, the Endicott Elementary School option is simply unacceptable. We could be here all night discussing in detail the list of reasons why the Endicott is not an appropriate fit, but due to time constraints, I will just highlight a few. EMK needs 15 classrooms to properly house its student body. The Endicott has nine, no science lab, no health assistant classroom, no gym, no nurse's office. It's not handicap accessible. The great distance between the two campuses would in reality split the school into two independent schools, destroying any chance of extracurricular activities, including clubs and athletics. Again, I could go on and on, but these are just the reasons. The bottom line is the EMK students, staff and community as a whole deserve better. And we are counting on you, the school committee, to listen to us tonight and do the right thing. In closing, I believe the future of public education in Boston is bright and we are asking you not to forget about EMK and our community as we move forward together. Thank you for your time and thank you to all of the EMK community members who talked tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. My next speaker is Sharon Hinton. Sharon will be followed by Sean Cray, Vicky Rodriguez, Lou Solano and Melanie Allen. If you could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Sharon?
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, BPS mother, educator, community advocate and president of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated. Congratulations to the new school committee members. And while I'm happy for them, I'm disappointed and a little angry about the process that continues to be used for political purposes. Wasn't this why the Boston School Committee was changed from elected to appointed? On another note, if a lawyer, doctor, teacher, bus driver lost their license, they would lose their job or ability to work or operate until the situation was rectified, regardless of the years or quality of service. Love you superintendent, but let's be fair. In addition, I join with school committee member Dearajo in his comments and concerns regarding the allocation, accountability and reporting of ESER funds. I remember him clearly asking for that early on and I support him now. Finally, I will reiterate the statement I supposedly made February 3rd that the school committee nominating panel reportedly used against my eligibility to be interviewed for the Boston School Committee, despite my qualifications and being recommended by two prior panels for the school committee. That statement reportedly was that the Boston School Committee should be elected, not appointed. I don't believe that statement should have been used to exclude me from a process or body with which I am obviously trying to participate on as evidenced by my continued efforts in applying. And I'm joined by about 65% of the Boston electorate. Well, since politics still exists in the composition and selection of the Boston School Committee, let's all at least be honest and restore the people's voices by restoring the vote. Again, the Boston School Committee should be elected, not appointed. All power to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Cray.
Uh, hi, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Hi, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Sean Cray. I am a cluster substitute teacher at EMK, and I live in Roxbury. I'd like to discuss BPS offering EMK's 11th and 12th grade campus as space at the Endicott Elementary School for the 2021-2022 school year. The Endicott Elementary School building is not going to best meet the needs of EMK's 11th and 12th grade students. It would be most equitable for us to have 15 classrooms that can have up to 25 students in a room, but there are only nine classrooms for us to use at Endicott. At Endicott, there are no rooms available for numerous members of our staff that support our students, such as the Special Education Office, the nurse, the school psychologist, the social worker, the family liaison, the operational director, the guidance counselor, the dean of school culture, the cluster substitute teachers, and our school partners such as the College Advising Corpse, A26 Boston, which does a lot of great work helping students with their writing, and Big Brother Big Sister Mentor 2.0, which is a program that does great work helping students get one-on-one support from a mentor in the professional world who helps guide them to get on track, to put them in a position to be able to achieve their college and post-college goals. All these groups and people I've mentioned do critical work that motivates students to achieve in the general education classroom and gives them the support that they need to achieve in the general education classroom. If none of these people and groups that I've mentioned have an adequate space to work with the students, it is going to be more difficult for them to adequately support the students. It seems that Timelte Middle School in Roxbury could be a good alternative for EMK's 11th and 12th grade campus for this upcoming year rather than the Endicott Building. Timelte is very close to public transportation, such as the Roxbury Crossing Orange Line Station. Whereas Endicott is much farther away from public transportation, Timelte is less than a mile away from EMK's 9th and 10th grade campus, whereas Endicott is 3.4 miles away from our 9th and 10th grade campus. Being at Timelte is better because due to its close location to the 9th and 10th grade. It is close enough, you know, to organize extracurricular activity. And due to the COVID-19 pandemic, a lot of our students didn't get to participate in extracurriculars last year. So I think it's of the utmost importance that EMK's 11th and 12th, all of the EMK students get the chance to participate in extracurricular activities this year. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you. My next speaker is Vicky Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicky Rodriguez, and I am the assistant head of school at EMK. I have been an administrator with BPS for the past 20 years. With the pandemic and specific guidelines that schools have to comply with, moving to the Endicott does not meet the EMK needs to educate all students equitably. We have been trying to find a building to move the entire school of grades nine through 12 for quite some time and have been met with barriers. Moving to the Endicott will not bring us any closer to our goal. EMK's mission is to prepare all students for college and provide them with skills for the working world. Given that we are a health career academy, our focus heavily weighs on exposing our students to the health-related professions, inclusive of certified programs in nursing assistance and emergency medical technicians. Are not these professions, particularly with the rise in COVID cases, the most important jobs in our nation today? I want to know if Black and Brown students who have experienced social, emotional, and educational injustice throughout their lives do not deserve a school that provides them with a supportive learning environment in which they can succeed in changing the lives of their family, neighbors, and community when it comes to equitable health care? Our school provides a rigorous education for the students of Boston, and BPS should consider our performance rate and make finding an appropriate school a priority for the students at EMK. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Allen. Melanie will be followed by Sonia Black, Adrian Headley, Edith Bazile, and Ruby Reyes. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Melanie?
Wait. Okay, I think I got it. Hi, I am a parent of a 3rd and 5th grader at the Roosevelt. I am a teacher of 7th and 8th graders at the Rafael Hernandez, and I wanted to talk about vaccines and our plans as a district and how we're going to make sure that our students are vaccinated, if they want to be, and I hope that they want to be. The time for planning this is now. Every teacher I know, when it hits August on the calendar, we're planning. And I would like to know, and I'm hoping to find out today, what the district is going to do to ensure that our students who are 12 and older have access to the vaccine, have ease of access. The school is an excellent point for that to happen. I know a lot of teachers, we may be on summer vacation, but many of us would volunteer to be making phone calls and if and we have family members, parents and grandparents who would be very happy to do the same. This should be a community effort, but it takes a plan, and so I hope we're making that plan. And speaking of small thing, but I do want to bring it up, which is the first day of school for teachers is the Tuesday after Labor Day. It always is. This year, that Teacher Day is going to be more important than ever. We are going to have new COVID protocols to go over, new plans to make. It is also Rosh Hashanah, and I am left in the very familiar space of having to choose between the job I love and my faith. And so I would just ask that if we can pay attention to these dates on the calendar, like August 1, we should have our plans ready, or hey, Rosh Hashanah is always predictable, and so is the second to the first Tuesday after Labor Day. Like, let's have that ready so we can make plans and not leave people in this situation.
Thank you. My next speaker is Edith Bazile.
Thank you so much. I want to echo everything Sharon Hinton said. BPS has a commitment to act, has made a commitment to academic excellence and innovation, and ESER funds is a perfect opportunity to center equity, diversity, and inclusion. The research is clear. Policy matters, curriculum matters, school culture and climate matters, and Black teachers matter. Black leadership matters to address anti-racism in meaningful ways and to make schools more inclusive for Black students. And I mean Black Americans, Afro-Latinos, Haitian students, Cape Verdeans, Somalians, ASL speakers, students with disabilities who are non-verbal and require alternative and augmentative communication devices. They're all important. Let's not forget about our multilingual learners who speak languages other than Spanish. Currently, policymakers, policy deciders in BPS are all white. Chief of Staff, Chief Financial Officer, Deputy Superintendent of Academics, and Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed. My question is, with no cultural insiders setting policy, how can the district move towards becoming anti-racist? How will BPS achieve hiring staff in key leadership positions to ensure a dynamic workforce? Second question, Bill BPS has not made equitable funding for schools serving Black students and students with disabilities. There's no plan for the McKinley School, which has a crumbling infrastructure, and where's the plan for Horace Mann and Jackson Mann? We've heard a lot about EMK. We haven't heard any offers for these schools. Shame. How will BPS accept, adopt a decolonized curriculum and culturally responsive pedagogy and practices, as well as early literacy supports? These are key for our students. And where is a strategic plan for special education? What is the plan for the McKinley School, which is at the bottom of achievement? My point is, BPS must put down its guard and pretenses through actions that demonstrate the adoption of rigorous, powerful standards, not just for students, but also its policy leaders and policy deciders, policymakers. BPS must assess and transform district policies, spaces, content, and practices that serve students equitably to lead into justice, as continues to refuse to hire Black leaders to make policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bazile. My next speaker is Ruby Reyes, followed by Gabe Avruch, Shadee Cantave, Sandra Montero, Susan Moore, and Damian Alfiero. If you can please raise your hands. Ruby Reyes?
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Beja would like to welcome the new school committee members. There are only a few short weeks before the new school year starts, and we know the central office is very busy in preparation for the coming school year. We hope that you learn from last year and focus your preparation on students with the greatest need first. Last year, students with disabilities, English learners, and students who were unable to access online learning were not prioritized. As the pandemic continues, we hope to hear comprehensive plans for students who require in-person services in safe environments, and this should be the first thing on the list for contingency planning should schools close again due to the pandemic. In addition, last year, educators spent endless hours creating digital learning tools and adapting curriculum. We hope there is a thoughtful process in ensuring this work is not lost, valued, and learned from. In terms of safe school environments, as decisions around Bill BPS continue to be inequitable, we hope the communication and work around finding safe school spaces for school communities are done with extensive communication. Currently, some school communities, such as the Jackson Mann and Horace Mann schools, still don't know where they will be in the fall. The needs of the McCormick School renovations being significantly scaled back continue to go unaddressed. We have not received a comprehensive equity analysis of the impact of the West Roxbury Educational Complex closure. Where are the lessons learned, and how are they being implemented in Bill BPS decisions and pandemic planning? We need to ensure that the lack of transparency and inequitable decision-making does not continue. For example, which schools will receive new HVAC systems? Which schools will be used as swing space for school renovations? We know that many hours, time, and data processing took place to create a more equitable process for selective school admissions. The exam school decision will most likely be contested legally. Beja recommends that if the decision is contested, there be a 100% lottery admissions policy alternative. We also ask at the same time and dedication and effort that went into making the exam school decision be made for school communities who have been impacted the most by the pandemic. Primarily, our students with disabilities, English learners, Black and Latino students, and school communities. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Gabe Avruch.
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gabe Avruch, and I'm an 11th and 12th grade special education teacher at EMK. Put simply, the Endicott is an unacceptable option for EMK juniors and seniors, even as a one-year stopgap solution. The Endicott building facilities are woefully inadequate to meet the needs of our students, particularly those students enrolled in our health-assisting vocational program, a cornerstone of our school's mission statement. Truth be told, we've been in a stopgap solution for finding a permanent home long before I was hired at EMK, five years ago in 2017. The Endicott is another example of us being asked to do more with less. To most adults, a year is just a year. Those who suffer the most by being placed at the Endicott, as everyone here knows tonight, are those to whom a year is so much more. Our young, bright, promising, amazing students, some of whom you've heard speak here tonight. Don't shortchange them by placing EMK at the Endicott. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Montero. I don't see Sandra signed into the meeting. Let's try Susan Moore.
Hello. My name is Susan Moyer, and I'm sorry, I am also on my Neighborhood Zoning Committee meeting, moving that away from me. I'm here tonight to remind you that the school department has neglected to protect students from abuse by a cult leader to whom the department had outsourced oversight of the Boston Student Advisory Council. To remind you that since the abuse was made public by the students in March, the department has done little to support those students. Well, the cult, Reevaluation Counseling, has organized a campaign to undermine the students' experiences. I'm the mother of one of those students. I've known about reevaluation counseling, and when my son told me that he was doing it in BSAC, I told him he could not attend those Wednesday sessions in Jenny Suzama's basement. I called Suzama and told her she did not have my permission to amol my son, and I called the RC headquarters in Seattle and told them the same thing, leave my son alone. But Suzama embedded evaluation counseling into BSAC in such a way that the students were unaware of the manipulation. They felt pressured, they were bribed with food, and RC became part of their paid work hours. Since Suzama was dismissed, the department has done nothing to support the students. The Boston Globe has done a better job of representing the interest of these students. I want accountability. I want to know who in the school department was covering for Suzama, and I want RC members who work in the school department to publicly stake the side of the students or face dismissal. I will speak to them now. RC members who work in the Boston Public Schools or are running for city council. On June 21st, you received instructions from your leader, Tim Jackins, on how to deflect experiences of the BSAC students and protect RC. He said nothing about the injury is done to the students, the violations of privacy, the failure to inform families, the lack of consent. Jackins gave instructions to you on how to ignore the students' experiences, and he closed with a link to the new RC propaganda website. This betrayal depended on silence from those who knew about it and from RC members who have kept the secrets and continue to protect the perpetrator. Every member of Reevaluation Counseling who works with BPS students should publicly identify themselves, staff, teachers, other people. And in writing, they should disavow Jackins' instructions, protect the students, or they should resign their positions.
Excuse me, Ms. Moore, if you could please wrap up. I'm done. Thank you. Our next speaker is Shadee Cantave, followed by Damian Alfiero, Mary Alice Witham, Stephanie Marson Lee, and Joseph Toledo. If you could please raise your hands virtually.
Hello. Hi.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Shadee Cantave. I'm the operational director for EMK managing the scheduling. And one thing I'm struggling with right now while scheduling for the upcoming school year is the academic restraints that would be put on our students if we were to be placed at Endicott. We have some exceptional students, as everyone has mentioned already, and a lot of these students qualify for AP-level courses. But unfortunately, if we were put into Endicott, Endicott does not have enough classrooms to accommodate that. So therefore, unfortunately, being forced to put these AP-level students into standard-level courses due to not having enough classrooms for us to offer additional AP-level sessions. So this means students are not pushed to their full potential, which leads to boredom, which leads to a lot of other things. I'm sure we can use our imagination. So if it's possible for the EMK staff to work together with the committee to obtain maybe some sort of list of available buildings that EMK can occupy for the upcoming school year, I believe that would be a step into the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Mary Alice Witham.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Alice Witham, and I'm the Coordinator of Special Education Department Chair and Facilitator of Student Support at Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. This will be my 15th year at EMK, and I have been so dedicated to this school because of its commitment to its mission of preparing students for college and career, its growth and progress over the years to provide opportunities for academic, social, emotional, and vocational student progress, just to name a few, and its endless support of students and their families. It is truly unmatched in Boston. In order to do this work, an equitable building for students and staff is needed, and the Endicott is not the option. The Endicott does not have enough classrooms, including no science lab and health assisting classroom, all of which are not only necessary at a very basic level, but necessary as a STEM school and to even fulfill our school's mission of providing opportunities for vocational training in CNA and EMT health fields, which many of our students with special needs participate in and have an opportunity to earn work experience and certification upon graduation. There is no special education office where confidential IEP and 504 meetings take place. Student special education testing occurs there, student support conferences happen daily, and so much more takes place in the special education office. Public transportation is also a major concern, especially for our students who are transitioning from middle school, having door-to-door transportation. In high school, we transition them to public transportation or try to. As a school and special education department, we work extremely hard to transition students from this support as this is of vital importance in supporting students' transition to adulthood and independence, and that will be very difficult with the Endicott. In addition, the building is not handicap accessible as required by Chapter 74 and is a vital part of my job and 504 plans I write for students, which impacts our ability to provide the necessary and legal supports to ensure that all students have access to free and appropriate, public education. As you can see, the Endicott will not allow us to continue with our growth and progress as a school. It will actually hinder our ability to do so. I appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to the committee making the right decision for EMK, its students, families, and staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No, I don't see Stephanie signed into our meeting, so our final speaker will be Joseph Toledo. Joseph, if you're with us, will you please raise your hand in zone? Joseph Toledo?
Give us a moment. He may be deaf. Give us one second.
Sharon, was there any response?
No, I'm actually looking. We've asked them to open up the screen.
No response?
No response.
Okay, well, thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first action item this evening is in-kind donations with a total estimated value of $19,820. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Are there any questions? Comments? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the in-kind donations as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The in-kind donations are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $17,868,972. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
You know, just as we go forward, just to keep a track record going back to my conversation earlier, it'd be great to have those, put another labeling by, you know, which ones are associated with which one of our strategic goals or our operational goals or outcomes, whichever you want to do, but it'd be nice to have that so we can just see and have an assessment of that. I know that board members have also asked a very difficult, challenging question today about how can we see the distribution of these grants and awards as they meet the needs of our most challenged schools? And that's a conversation we've had over the years about finding a way to get that data organized. I know that Mary and Monica are now thinking about what they could do, but that would be two things about, one, how do we look at the grants, because these are new monies, and how they're addressing our specific strategic goals, and because they're new monies, how do we look at the equity in terms of the distribution to the schools with the greatest needs? So how we get some reporting on that, maybe quarterly, would be very useful.
Yep. Mr. Coleman, I just want to comment as well that equity and funding is something that gets brought up by families and parents quite often and our educators as well. So having a tracking system has been a goal of mine for a long time coming here. And so Monica Roberts and her team is working on that with the partnership team. And now with our new executive director at BEDF as well, we are going to really be looking at how we equitably fund and how we get grants out to schools equitably. Part of ESTER, the ESTER Grant, we worked with the commission and our community to look at how we equitably get the funding out. This is a top priority for us, so thank you, and we will work on that and report back to the school committee on that.
Great, great. I know we want dashboards to be accessible and easy, but I think we're too, we may be too complex for that. And so we have to have a very dynamic dashboard so people can be able to ask specific questions to it. I know that's a big challenge. I know you've been working on it. I just want to reinforce the importance of that in terms of our, where we sit, being able to track distribution.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment. Thank you. I was really excited to see the investment in Universal Pre-K and that particular pilot, I think especially given what's happened with the pandemic and knowing that that access to that type of programming for our Black and Brown children is always a challenge. I'm really grateful to see that that type of investment, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented.
Promoved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yep.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item this evening is the suspension of the maximum age enrollment policy for school year 21-22. You'll recall that at our June 30th meeting, Manny Allen, Director of the Reengagement Center, and Carlos Diaz, Coordinator of School Services for Alternative Education, presented the superintendent's recommendation to suspend the maximum age and enrollment policy for this upcoming school year due to the COVID pandemic. Suspension of the policy would allow students who will turn 21 years old on or before August 31st, 2021, to remain enrolled in Boston Public Schools through the end of the 2021-2022 school year or until graduation requirements are met, whichever comes first. I will now invite the superintendent to give any final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Manny and his team for bringing this forward. We did this last year. We need to do it again. The pandemic obviously has been disproportionately impactful on some of our more vulnerable populations, particularly our older unaccredited youth, and having this additional year will allow them to catch up.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
Just a quick comment. One of the exciting things part about this, about this central decision is what we know, what we've come to learn about teaching and learning is that it doesn't, it doesn't fit neatly into the boxes of ages and grades, ages and grades. And so this would be, I think, a good model for us to start thinking about how do people learn and how do we help them get to the level of competence that they need? And how do we change our policies to support that and move away from historical theories of what should happen? And obviously, as we encourage and look forward to have more substantive PK 12-20 funding, that should be something that as that happens, our part of that ecology can really look at how to be more student-oriented in the way we identify who we provide service for and how. We may be the better system for some to be engaged in rather than community colleges and vice versa. And as we move that way, I think this proposal is a good step in that direction to look, become more child-centered and focus on their developmental needs. So thank you for the district for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the suspension of the maximum age and enrollment policy as presented.
Promoved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item is two Up Academy charter amendments. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Up Education Network Chief Operating Officer Mike Bauer presented a request for the committee's approval of, one, Up Academy Boston's memorandum of understanding, and, two, Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester's management contract with Up Education Network. I will now invite the superintendent to give any final comments.
I don't have any regarding the Up Academy proposal. This is our second time discussing it, and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. None? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Up Academy's Boston memorandum of understanding and Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester's management contract with Up Education Network as presented. Is there a motion?
Promoved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is preparing for school year 21-22. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Castellius and her team to please present their report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is some of our most important work in front of us and has been for the past two years, as you know. And as everyone knows, this has been quite something to mitigate COVID. I think early on this summer, we thought we wouldn't have to, you know, be making such serious preparations. But we, turning it into gear for the last several weeks and months, and my team is ready to present a high-level overview. There are still some questions unknown, given the CDC guidance recently and also the state guidance. And so we'll continue to monitor that, and we'll continue to update you regularly on our reopening and make sure that the public and our parents are aware, as well as our educators and school leaders. I'm going to turn it over to the team now, and then I'll answer questions afterward with the team members.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Dr. Jennifer Lo for being with us today, who will be discussing the current health measures and how those will shift this year compared to last year based on new science and the new ways that we're looking at COVID spread within the community. Thank you, Dr. Lo.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. Again, my name is Dr. Jennifer Lo. I'm the Medical Director for Boston Public Health Commission. Next slide, please. I am going to go through three metrics that we utilize to evaluate the current spread of COVID-19 in the city of Boston, specifically around its severity. These are focusing on hospital metrics, and I'll go into a little bit more detail of why we're looking at these metrics later on in slides. So these are the daily COVID-19 emergency department visits. This metric helps us understand the impact of COVID-19 on the first entry point into our hospital system, the emergency rooms. It also indicates where people often go when they can't get into their primary care provider, or they don't have access to insurance, et cetera. Emergency room often becomes an overflow department. So the goal for this metric is to, from the week before, the level of visits should be less than the week before. If we have seven consecutive days indicated in red where the emergency room visits are higher, it turns red, and that's a concern. So as you can see here, the last seven days, we only had two that were higher than the week before's utilization for COVID-19. Next slide, please. This is the second metric, which is an indication of adults hospitalized in Boston hospitals for COVID-19. This helps us understand, again, the impact of hospitalizations from COVID in our Boston hospitals. Right now, our average is 39 adult patients hospitalized in Boston, and our threshold of concern is 200 patients or more. So we are well below our level of concern right now. And it has been, it has been many weeks since we have been above the threshold of concern. Next metric, next slide. Our third measure is the percent of non-surg adult intensive care unit beds occupied. Again, this is another measure to see how our hospitals are accommodating any ICU beds, and this is COVID and non-COVID beds. Our current level is 88% of non-surgical ICU beds that are occupied, and our threshold of concern is 95%. So all three metrics, we are below our threshold of concern at this time. Next slide, please. I'm going to present some vaccine I'm going to present some vaccine data for you. This is Boston residents with at least one COVID nineteen vaccine dose, partially vaccinated and fully vaccinated. Obviously, we want everyone to be fully vaccinated. The one, at least one dose indicates those folks who have determined that vaccination is the best way for them to protect themselves against the disease. So right now, we're looking at sixty seven point two percent of Boston total population with at least one dose and sixty point six percent with that are fully vaccinated. Next slide, please. These are the percent of individuals with at least one dose divided by age. As you can see, we are concerned at the twelve to fifteen year old range. Twenty five point four percent of individuals in this age group have at least one dose. And again, this is in comparison to the sixty, sixty seven percent citywide rates. You can see that we are also lagging in the sixteen to twenty three, four year old age. Next slide, please. This is distribution of vaccines, the first dose by race and ethnicity. Again, you can see lag behind the citywide vaccine rate in black and Latinx individuals, as well as white individuals and our American Indian and Alaska native. Next slide, please. This is the number of folks that are vaccinated first dose by neighborhood. And the next slide should be the rates by neighborhood. Oh, I apologize. Could you go to the back slide, please? This is a total by number of folks vaccinated total. When you look at the rates, the neighborhoods that are behind the citywide average rate are the Dorchesters, two, one, two, five, Dorchester, two, 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 four, Fenway, and Matapan. So those rates fall behind the sixty seven percent vaccination rate of the city. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to highlight the key points of this data. Vaccine rates are very high in the city of Boston overall, especially in our higher age groups. Again, sixty seven percent that have one dose, and those really indicate the folks who have decided that they want to vaccinate. Although we have sixty percent of folks fully vaccinated, our hope and assumption is that the majority of those folks, I'm sorry, the majority of the those who have their first dose will become fully vaccinated in the next few weeks. We have seen an increase of cases in the last few weeks. However, there is a very low risk of severe disease or death with those that are vaccinated. And given our high rates of vaccination, that is the reason why we are focusing on hospitalizations, because that is the measure of severe disease or death. And we are very concerned about overutilization of our hospital and clinical infrastructure. That is what our primary concern was in the first surge in the spring of twenty twenty. So we are focusing that on in the next few months to ensure that the hospital system is not overrun in the coming months. COVID nineteen vaccine still remains the best public health tool needed to the end, needed to end the COVID nineteen pandemic. So our primary areas of concern are vaccinations for our youth aged twelve to fifteen. That age group is below the citywide average. We are actually about to launch a back to school initiative where many of our clinical partners, health centers, and hospitals will be offering vaccines with incentives, raffle prizes, and food. That information can be found on boston.gov. So we are very hopeful that a number of our youth and their families will take advantage of the vaccines that are offered to them. In addition to this age group, the neighbor, the communities, rather, that are most impacted that we're concerned about are the four that I just stated there. And we are continuing to put vaccine clinics throughout the city of Boston with particular interest in supporting folks to get vaccine, as well as educating about the benefits of vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lo, for this information this evening and for your continued partnership throughout this pandemic. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you and your team for your support. Good evening, members of the school committee and BPS community joining us this evening. We are so excited to return to school starting in thirty six days this September. Due to the ongoing pandemic, our top priority is ensuring the health and safety of our students and staff. In tonight's presentation, you'll hear about our current enrollment of students expected for a full return, our health and safety measures, the readiness of our buildings, as well as access to technology and healthy food. Returning strong is important to our students' recovery from any learning loss in their overall health and wellness. Our buildings are safe and ready for a full return of in-person learning. Soon, you'll hear from Jenny Lobel Lobes, the BPS Director of Health Services. We've learned a great deal in the past year about what has worked as we navigated the pandemic, as well as what may no longer be necessary because of recent science. We've been following the guidance from the CDC Centers for Disease Control, the state, and the Boston Public Health Commission. Again, we want to reiterate, the best way to protect ourselves from COVID nineteen is to get vaccinated. Regular testing and the use of masks. These are our three main mitigating factors as we head back to school this fall. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Monica Roberts, who will continue the next portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Apina, and good night, members of the school committee. I want to talk a little bit about where we are with student enrollment, including our efforts to reach out to families and register them. The Welcome Center services continue to be available to families to register remotely. Families are also able to complete pre-registration and schedule an in-person appointment, where that is preferred, to complete the registration process. They can also call the centers and work directly with the registration specialists, if that is easier. So we're trying to provide multiple ways for families to access our services for registration and assignment. During the late spring and through July, the Dorchester and Rosendale Welcome Centers were open for in-person services by appointment only. As of August second, all Welcome Centers located in Dorchester, Rosendale, Roxbury, and East Boston are open for appointment and for walk-in services. And again, we are continuing our remote services as well. The Welcome Centers have continued outreach and have been utilizing local and ethnic radio and newspapers, streaming services such as iHeartRadio and BET, well as others, and geofencing ads which focus on geographic locations and with a focus on the areas where we tend to have families registering in the summer. We continue to work with other community-based organizations to disseminate information about registration and to encourage families to join us at the Boston Public Schools and that we are going to be opening safely and looking forward to welcoming their children. We also have done MBTA and bus ads over the course of this year, and we'll continue with these efforts and more as we go into the next registration season. We have currently fifty one thousand nine hundred and twenty nine students enrolled as of July twenty sixth. That is a little over six thousand in grades K zero to K two, so about sixty three hundred, eighteen hundred four thirty seven in grades one to five, ten thousand eight hundred and thirty two in grades six to eight, and sixteen thousand three hundred seventy three in grades nine to twelve. These numbers do not include the families that we expect to register over the course of August. The summer, August in particular, is our second busiest registration of season generally each year. So we hope that those numbers will continue to go up. With that, I will turn it to my colleague, Dr. Lobes, who will talk more about health and safety.
Thank you very much, Monica. Good evening, Madam Chair and school committee members. I'm Jenny Lobel Lobes, the Senior Director of Health Services. I will provide you with a brief update of our health and safety COVID nineteen mitigation strategies for the upcoming school year. We will continue using the practices in which we learned from and implemented through the spring and summer of last school year. As we continue to ensure the safety of our community, we must continue to monitor the symptoms of COVID nineteen. If any symptoms of COVID nineteen are present, we ask that you stay home, report symptoms, and seek guidance from your healthcare provider. We will require that all students and BPS staff wear face masks while in school buildings and on the bus, even if you are fully vaccinated. We must continue to practice good hand hygiene, continue with school cleaning and disinfecting schedules and ventilation strategies. We are working closely with the Boston Public Health Commission and reviewing current Centers for Disease Control CDC guidelines and maintaining previous mitigation strategies. BPS does not plan to mandate physical distancing when we return to school this fall. We continue to review updated guidance on student groupings and assigned ceilings, student COVID nineteen testing, and access to free testing for staff. Contact tracing will continue in collaboration with Boston Public Health Commission on reporting protocols. Current medical waiting areas are also under review. Any student who is feeling ill while in school will be required to be six feet apart. As part of a continued effort to enhance the capabilities, health services, to provide a safe, equitable, and healthy environment for all BPS students and staff, we have increased our staffing to include contact tracers, a pool testing coordinator, and project manager. Next slide, please. Current and previous mitigation strategies are essential to the safety of all students and BPS staff. What we do know is that vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID nineteen pandemic. Vaccinations are crucial to the safe return to fully in-person learning as well as extracurricular activities and sports. CDC recommends everyone twelve years and older to get a COVID nineteen vaccine to help protect against COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen vaccines are available to all who live, work, or study in Massachusetts, regardless of immigration status. And COVID nineteen vaccines can reduce the risk of people spreading the virus. BPS is committed to providing vaccine education materials to our students, families, and staff, providing information about vaccine clinics, health throughout the city of Boston and surrounding communities, and a continued collaboration with Boston Public Health Commission to increase opportunities for back-to-school vaccination clinics. Boston Public Health Commission will be hosting back-to-school vaccination events through August. Information will be shared this week with our BPS students and families. We're also holding a vaccination clinic at the Josiah Quincy Upper School this Friday with collaboration with Tufts Medical Center. We will continue to monitor updates from the Centers for Disease Control, public health officials, and awaiting additional guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on expectations for health and safety protocols. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Indira Alves. Thank you.
Good evening, madam chairperson and committee members. Y bienvenidos a nuestro nuevo miembros, Ms. Lopera and Ms. Polanco Garcia. I am going to go over some of the facilities, work that we're currently doing at BPS. So the IAQ sensors, in addition to the window project from last year, where of the twenty seven thousand windows in the district, twelve thousand were identified in need of cleaning and repair, which occurred. We are now moving forward with installing indoor air quality sensors across the district. Installation began on July twelfth, and these sensors will provide real-time reporting on the quality of the air in rooms. BPS has purchased five thousand sensors to be installed in all school buildings. All sensors will be installed by September seventeenth. Classrooms are our priorities, the sensors, and we will be procuring an additional two thousand monitors for offices and shared spaces. Air purifiers, filters, replacement. Filters are being replaced per the specification of being changed every six months. To date, one thousand five hundred and twenty nine purifiers have had filters replaced in thirty six schools. The project is on track to be completed prior to students' return. A total of eight thousand units will have filters replaced. Following the requirements of the units, filters are replaced every six months. On the MRF thirteen filter replacement, filters will be replaced as part of the regular maintenance of the systems in thirty two buildings that have MRF thirteen and above filters. Next slide, please. Summer cleaning, BPS custodial crews are completing sanitation of buildings and are on track to be complete for students' return. Sanitation stations, schools have sanitation stations in hallways and classrooms with ample supplies in stock for replacement. And PPE will be delivered to schools this month. Next slide, please. Transportation, the routing and bus assignment. Routing of bus eligible students is ongoing and on track. Bus assignments will be sent via mail and email the last week of August. Families can use our online support portal to request any alternative transportation or other bus assignment changes. to request any alternative transportation or other bus assignment changes. Our customer service staff also emailed and called all families who had similar transportation changes in place this past year to help them resubmit those requests if they were like. We're working closely with our bus contractor to ensure that we are ready for operational, operationally smooth start to the school year. Our drivers and monitors will both be, will have completed their bids by August twenty-seventh, and drivers will have a full week for dry runs. The MBTA passes for eligible students in grades seven to eleven will be distributed to schools before the start of school. Student who received T-passes can pick them up at their school on the first day of school. Bus monitors, we are prioritizing students with IEPs, and will make sure bus monitors are provided to all students who require one. Our monitors unit is working hard to recruit and hire additional bus monitors. We consistently struggle to find candidates and are currently short of our hiring goal. In the meantime, we will continue to work cross-functionally with other departments to improve our recruitment and retention of bus monitors. And any suggestions is welcome. The bus health and safety protocols will continue to follow all health and safety protocols as outlined by DESI, BPHC, and BPS. We expect that students will be required to wear masks on buses this fall. Buses will be disinfected, and we are continuing, continuing to wipe down the bus with disinfectant spray and paying close attention to high-touch surfaces. Thank you very much, and I will turn it over now to my colleague, Mike Mark Christine.
Good evening. The last time we spoke, we were discussing the rollout of fifty thousand Chromebooks. Now that that is complete, our efforts are turning over to maintaining and sustaining all of those devices that we acquired. We have no intentions of slowing down, and in order to help our schools this coming fall, we're currently applying for a federal program called the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is federal funding to help close the digital divide moving forward. So not just in response to COVID, but in order to meet the needs of the new digital classroom. So we are applying, we're in the process of applying, and the window closes next Friday for additional Chromebooks for schools to take home, as well as additional supports for teacher laptops. In addition, we'll also be able to continue support for hotspots for any student that may need a hotspot, as well as Comcast vouchers. Over the last year, we rolled out a program to support families that needed financial assistance for paying Comcast, and that allowed us to take on the financial sustainability of home broadband, and we'll continue with that program moving forward. The other program that we're going to continue to advertise is a federal, another federal funding program called the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. This is a national program that allows families, low-income families or families in eligible schools to receive fifty dollars a month off of their home broadband bill. This is a program directly between the family and their internet service provider, but will be able to provide supports in helping families to apply and providing translated materials on how the program can be used. And then we're also excited to continue support for many of the new tools that were adopted during COVID in, in terms of instructional tools, operational tools, like Lexia. Talking Points is a, an application that we adopted to help teachers text message with families. NearPod, Seesaw, and a new one this year called Permission Click will help, which will help us to automate many of the permission forms and parent contact updating, or updates. So those are the, the ongoing efforts around technology, and we hope by the next time we talk, we'll have some good news for the Emergency Connectivity Fund. With that, I'll turn it now over to my colleague Laura Benavides.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to share information regarding the Food and Nutrition Services Department and our plans for returning to school. This year, our focus is to return to cooking in all of our cafeteria sites. We have heard from our students and families and staff of how they miss the meals that are prepared with our fresh ingredients. Our chefs and nutrition team have been working tirelessly to refine our current recipes and also develop new ones based on student feedback. We focused not only on favorites such as homemade macaroni and cheese, from-scratch blueberry muffins and scones, but created additional recipes such as vegan lo mein and buffalo-style wraps to add spice. As the new recipes are added to our menus, we will also incorporate our grant-funded program, A Chef in the Dining Room. A chef will visit our schools to prepare our recipes on-site and gather immediate feedback from students. This provides an opportunity to engage with students on their suggestions of what is delicious, appealing, and most importantly, culturally relevant. In conjunction with cooking on-site, we are also gearing up to roll out our MyWay cafes that were built in summer of twenty twenty, but also the new eighteen projects that will be completed this semester. We continue to focus on local procurement to complement our meal programs. We have partnerships with local farms for fresh produce, a local pizzeria to provide a student-favorite pizza. We have also partnered with two local companies for granola and breakfast bars, and North Coast Seafoods will be providing fish. All cafeteria staff will return back to buildings by September third for training on our new recipes, safety protocols, and updates from the state. We are emphasizing customer service, communication, and accountability. Part of our preparation also includes assessing the needs for students in school and out of school. Therefore, we will continue to assess the need for meal and grocery distribution outside of the school day. We are excited about this school year, but it does come with challenges. We have a higher-than-usual vacancy rate and are continuously recruiting staff, recruiting for staff to staff our cafeterias quickly. The majority of the open positions come from the newly-created MyWay cafes, where we went from one person in the location to three persons. It is still our priority to hire to ensure the rollout schedule is minimally impacted. Additionally, we are aware of the concerns regarding grocery issues that have impacted school nutrition programs across the country. For food and nutrition, excuse me, for food and nutrition services, we have had to reissue our grocery RFP a second time. In obtaining feedback from potential proposers, we have made adjustments to allow for flexibility in delivery schedules and minimal substitutions. We anticipate the new vendor to be announced on or before August twentieth. We have and we do continue to plan for alternatives in place, but the goal is to continue to cook on-site and bring in products quickly and efficiently. Thank you. I will now hand it over to my colleague Avery to present information on athletics.
Thank you, Laura. Madam Chair and members of the School Committee, Avery Esdale, Senior Director of Athletics. I'm here tonight to review with you our planning and preparation for athletics in the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. From the time that we ended our year last year in our athletic season that ran in an untraditional way, our plan always was to return to our normal calendar year. The dates highlighted on my slide highlight the MIAA interscholastic dates for each of our seasons. But we also will be back to offering our middle-level athletic offerings for our middle school students, grade five to eight, and our Special Olympic and Unified Sport offerings that we run in a range from K to twelve. The middle-level athletics and Special Olympic offerings are managed internally by us in BPS, and so those dates and, and activities are set on our calendar, which we'll establish as the school year gets closer. I did want to highlight our ability to partner with health and wellness to offer physical activity and an engagement opportunity during the summer in organizing volleyball clinics and an outdoor strength and conditioning program that we held here at White Stadium. Both of those opportunities were well-received and I think shed some light on the concept of enrichment over the summer through some of the athletic opportunities that are not traditionally found in Boston. So we'll look forward to trying to work through that as we move forward, but also to continue to collaborate as we think about our summer, not only academics, but enrichment and engagement for students in BPS. As we also continue to prepare for the fall season, obviously, the health and safety protocols continue to be a piece that has evolved with each day. Where we are right now, we will be wearing masks for athletics for any events that take place indoors as we start the season, so that will affect volleyball and swimming when they're out of the water. In terms of our other outdoor sports, it's a fluid process, and we are staying in close contact and communication with health services as we determine if there are other measures that we'll need to implement for our outdoor sports. Across the board, we will be taking and implementing and using the QR codes that we used last year with athletics, which allowed us to maintain an attendance at all practices and games, and we'll have that in place in the event that contact tracing is required or needed. So we're prepared and ready to go, but obviously, we are monitoring the situation if it, if it will affect anything that we continue to, to plan and prepare to roll out. With that, I will pass it over to my colleague Drew Eckelson.
Thank you, Avery, for that presentation. Good evening, Chair Robinson and members of the School Committee. I wanted to begin before I start to talk a little bit about our academic plan for the year by thanking members of the operational team, both at the system level and the school level. It is, there is no question, they are working tirelessly each and every day to ensure that our schools are ready for the brilliant children and families that we will soon accept as the school year begins. This is not an easy task at all, and I recognize and applaud their great efforts. It is important that our schools are safe and ready for our students, and so too is it important that we ready ourselves for the academic and social-emotional needs of our students to meet this moment. And so I'll move on to the next slide. And I wanted to share with the committee and members of the public a little of the, a little bit about the investments that we are making to support our academic agenda in the district. There is no question that the most important thing we can do each and every day in Boston classrooms across the city is ensure a strong tier-one level of instruction for every student, and that's our goal. We are fortunate to have had the support from local officials and through federal dollars of making significant investments to continue to support the recovery of our students and our families. Some of those investments include increased and robust interventions to support our English learners and multilingual learners with explicit focus on English learners with disabilities. We will continue to invest in high-quality compensatory services for our students with disabilities and also expand seats for universal pre-K, as mentioned by one of the School Committee members earlier this evening. As Mark Christine mentioned, we're also making investments in digital literacy platforms, most especially to support outcomes and opportunities for our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities and ensuring that we do everything to assess our English learners for their ELD levels or their English language development levels and create individual plans to support their acceleration. We've invested in seventy-four new family liaisons, as Superintendent mentioned earlier this evening, as well as one hundred new social workers across schools in the BPS to support the social and emotional needs of our students and to support better links between the academic learning at our schools and the family and community engagement efforts at our school and system level. And as I mentioned earlier in the, in this presentation, that the most important thing we can do is ensure high-quality, rigorous tier-one instruction, most specifically in the area of literacy. That will be our academic focus and our academic priority for this school year, and we are committed to ensuring that we are offering high-quality professional learning for educators on equitable literacy, as well as our central office leaders, so that central office is poised to directly support schools in this effort. These recovery efforts will certainly support our children and our families, and we're also acutely aware from the engagement processes that Chief Mitchell and Chief Roberts led as part of our Esser work, that the community understands that we need to do, do far better to ensure that we have a stronger, better BPS. That is what we are committed to delivering on from an academics perspective, and there are things that are necessary in order for us to put ourselves on a path to a stronger, better BPS, most, most specifically in the area of academics. And so I'm committed to ensuring, as leading the academic team, that we develop a Boston Public Schools academic framework that puts at the center groups of students for whom we have historically not, not provided the level of supports that they deserve. We need to ensure that our academic framework drives the facility decisions that we'll be making as part of Build BPS and other investments we need to make in our capital system. And we need to continue the work of high school redesign efforts, most specifically implementing the Mass Core Initiative, which the School Committee has been briefed on in the past. These are important things to continue us on a path to reimagining academics within the BPS. I'll move on to the next slide, where I'll talk a little bit about our academic priorities for this year. There's one central priority across the BPS from an academic perspective, and that is to ensure that we're implementing an equitable literacy across the pre-K to twelve district and most specifically doing that for our English learners and our students with disabilities. That is the most critical work that we will focus on, and we're going to begin it by focusing on the science of reading, understanding what the research tells us about how students across a pre-K to twelve system learn to read. And we have two additional priorities in service of that goal of equitable literacy. One, we're going to support structures at the school level, teaming structures, to support the implementation of high-quality equitable literacy. And that we're going to, three, use an equity-based observational tool called the Cryoop tool to evaluate our implementation of literacy at the system level and at the school level to ensure that our implementation of literacy is in fact equitable and in support of the needs of our English learners and students with disabilities. It is not enough to just tell schools that this is going to be a priority. We have a responsibility as a central office team to ensure that our supports are helping schools and helping school principals implement the work that we're talking about relative to equitable literacy. And so we'll be focusing our August Leadership Institute on, on professional learning as a community, including teacher leaders at every school that focus on this, on these three instructional priorities. We're going to ensure that our central office has, has, also has professional learning around the priorities, so that when central office leaders are supporting schools, they're doing it with deep knowledge and understanding of the work on which we're focused. We're going to provide additional professional learning for all of our professional, paraprofessionals across the system so they too can provide and support instruction related to equitable literacy, as well as for our transformation coaches. And finally, we'll be partnering with the Family and Community Engagement Office to ensure equitable literacy sessions with families so that they too can learn about and support our, and inform our work. It's now my pleasure to turn it over to Niva Cookley, the Chief Student Support Officer, who will close our presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and committee members. We are last, but not least. The student support and our team has conducted an extensive process of community engagement to solicit input with regards to the impact of the police reform bill that was signed recently. I've attached a presentation that will outline some of the impact changes within Safety Services, and I'm very sure that we'll be doing an in-depth presentation prior to school start. Some of our main focus is to strengthen community relationships. We created a positive narrative that reflects improving community perception and understanding of the police reform and its impact on BPS, restoring the transparency and accountability of the Office of Safety Services, update name and uniforms to create a more approachable image, which will support community engagement. Our engagement practices, the Office of Safety Service has engaged in stakeholders with stakeholders during school visits across eleven Boston districts. We've attended numerous community meetings and interacted with thousands of community members and received an enthusiastic support on social media with regards to the impact of the police reform. Operational improvements, we've improved our radio communications by installing a radio system, Babren. We've had conversations with Boston Police, and that communication system will remain as-is, which will allow us an access to notify in case of emergency our instant- instantaneously nine-one-one system, which is a true benefit for our buildings. We've increased reliability and compliance with that system. We've dedicated to improving staff training and professional development as related to the police reform. We ensure school, safe schools, timed arrivals, our class transitions, and dismissals. Our mobile personnel proactively visit schools every day and respond to location requests. We provided coverage support to thirty-two food sites during the COVID time and a hundred and thirty athletic games, and we'll continue this service in spite of the police reform altering our label and title. We still have a tremendous dedication and commitment to the safety of our students for BPS. Thank you very much for your attention and continued support.
Well, thank you all for your report, and thank you for the incredible work you're doing to prepare for the school year. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Please raise your hand virtually. All right, Mr. DeRouge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. One is with respect to the presentation part on enrollment. I know that as of, I think like early July, I was still hearing from heads of school, and this is, you know, there's certain data points that there's real concern about dropping enrollment. And it sounds like maybe things kind of picked up, and I just wanted to ask about that. And then I appreciated the academic presentation, and I just had just a general question on the literacy piece, how we're going to measure that and how folks were, school leaders were involved and so forth in developing that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Our enrollment is up compared to the same time last year. So if we looked at July twenty-fifth last year, we were at just above twenty-five hundred students registered. So we talk about new registrations versus this year, we are just over forty-one hundred. So we do see those numbers up. That said, we, as a district, have been planning for enrollment to find since last October through the budget process. We have been hoping that enrollment will increase and bounce back. But we do understand that there are residual impacts, both from the pandemic as well as federal immigration policy. So we're watching what's happening nationally with our colleagues at Council of Green City Schools and working with the city to see what will happen in our team and finance. And my office are working really closely together to keep an eye on what will be happening while we're there.
And I'll take the question on reading assessments. Thank you for the really important question on measurement. I'm someone who values return on investment very significantly, so I always appreciate questions like this. I think there's a few things that we'll be implementing. My understanding is that this was in deep consultation with a group of school leaders. And we'll be implementing the MAP and WA assessment in literacy. Has several different components. In the early years, students read passages, and they record those passages, and an independent evaluator sort of evaluates the degree to which the student had miscues or sort of incorrectly read words. And so we're assessing both their fluency and their comprehension as part of that process. At the upper grades, across the grades three to eight, we are implementing the MAP reading assessment, which will provide us growth between multiple assessments over the course of the year and allow us to look at both individual growth and growth at the school level and at the regional level for a group of network of schools as we're sort of moving forward to evaluate the degree to which our equitable literacy efforts are supporting dramatically improved outcomes for students. We'll also be, over time, be thinking about paced interims. These are assessments that are linked specifically to standards, so we can evaluate and assess the degree to which our students are making progress specifically around important standards like key ideas and details, which tend to be the comprehension strategies that are very important to demonstrate literacy skills.
Thank you very much for the answer, and good to meet you virtually as well. So, thank you.
You too.
Ms. Mercer?
Thank you for the amazing presentation. Before I start, I want to say sorry for any loud noises. I'm kind of close to the living room, and my family's watching the Olympics, so it's kind of a little bit loud. So I have two questions, one for the transportation team and other for the food and nutrition. But I'm going to go first with the transportation team. So in regards for the MBTA passes and how it's eligible for students in grades seven through eleven, what happened to sixth grade and twelfth grade? Because as a twelfth grader myself, I take the MBTA to go to and from school, to go to my after-school activities and all around Boston. And it's kind of really important, even for my other friends, that parents can't drop them off like myself. And yeah, that's the first part of that question. And the second part is, are these bus passes that are being provided M-sevens? Or like the previous years, or are they as passes, AKA reduced student passes?
The first, Ms. Mercer, the bus passes are the M-seven passes that they've always gotten. And then can you repeat your first question?
My first question was in regard to eligibility and how it's for grade seven through eleven. What happened to the twelfth graders and the sixth graders? Like, why aren't they eligible for the bus passes?
The bus passes are grade seven through twelve. And there are some question about sixth graders. We recently had some parents ask about it. We do have some parents who think that sixth grade is too young. If that's something that you're interested in, we would be glad to take that back and continue to think about the age level that's appropriate to be writing the MBTA.
Yes, honestly, I would like to hear about that more on the sixth grade piece, because I think, I know a few sixth graders, well, back when I was in middle school, that also take the bus pass as well, like take the bus as well, even when I went to a charter school. So I think if some parents are asking to give the parents that are asking, if parents don't want it, then don't give them it. And then for my second piece, for the food and nutrition, it's just really more of like a comment slash ask about the role of My Way Cafe. There's going to be thirty-six sites, and I'd like a list of the sites, if that's available anywhere.
It is absolutely available. We can get you the list of all where we have the My Way Cafe, when they were put in, in each school, and how we're finishing that project this year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking to see if anybody else has raised their hand or has a question. Yes, Ms. Lopera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very in-depth presentation, so appreciate that. I'm just going to focus just one question that I have around student support. The last slide talks about safety officers being assigned to a certain number of schools. And obviously, it's not every school, and so I'm curious to understand what that looks like on a day-to-day basis, what schools are assigned or have safety officers, or kind of what that really looks like in the district.
Great. I will defer to Chief Cookley-Grice or Mr. DePina.
Chief, if you could start, and I could fill in if that's helpful.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I didn't bring, I usually have all my notes. I have specifically the number of schools that we are at. Oh, I'm sorry, it's right out here. So our determination in schools is one, by request from the schools, and two, by the number of incidences that we've had at particular schools. And in some respects, the number of traffic that occurs in that particular area. The elementary schools, we don't have safety specialists, which is our new designation, assigned, but we do monitor those on a regular basis. And then we're proactively responding to those, depending on incidences that occur in the area. Our schools are city schools, and unfortunately, there are some areas that, some incidents that may impact the schools. So we need to have resources and support in those areas for local police department and also for local emergency services. So that's pretty much how we do it now. Moving forward, we're going to be looking at a more diverse deployment plan. As I mentioned earlier, within the next few weeks prior to school starting, I'll have a more specific plan as far as where safety specialists are going to be assigned. So that's still in process, but previously, it was as a result of the things I mentioned.
And if I could just add to that, we do have a mobile unit that is able to be deployed to any school. And we're continuously working with the Boston Police Department on how we respond to emergencies in and around the school as well. So there's also that level of support that's needed, but for the most part, our officers, we want to make sure we, as we transition to this new model, that schools do have more of a say and choice of who's in the building and when and where and how, and activities that they're engaged in.
Appreciate that context. If you all could possibly share a list of schools that are opting into this resource. And I'm also really curious to understand which schools are perhaps being tracked with higher incidence. I just would like to look into that information if possible.
Just from my experience as well, Ms. Lemonna, just giving out the specific schools, sometimes it's just a safety issue as well. My experience is coming from BPD, we don't kind of like to give out specifically what locations do have safety specialists and the number, just for safety concerns. But we're working very closely with the heads of schools, with the superintendents, and with the superintendent herself in our deployment of safety specialists moving forward.
Thank you.
Right. Ms. Pelanco Garcia? Yeah, go ahead. You're still muted.
Just want to congratulate everybody. It was an excellent report. Everybody at the district did an excellent job. I think it's true that more than forty percent of us are English learners. And English learners, as I heard, are one of the top three priorities that you mentioned. That is very good indeed. It is critical. It is critical to instill the first language of the native language is never lost. I don't know if that was part of the research or not, but the teachers could be instructed on the importance of keeping the first language, so the students could be truly bilingual. It is very well-known statistically that students that are bilingual have multiple, a wide spectrum of opportunities available. Another point I would like to make, it has a relation to the restorative justice. So sometimes what is happening is that we are criminalizing the students. The students are being kicked out of schools. So this is a matter of informing, informing the teachers and giving perhaps teachings or classes on what restorative justice is. They have to be informed, the teachers themselves, not to criminalize the students. It is critical that these teachers have the required courses, intensive courses in that regard, to prevent the students from being kicked out of the schools for any over-criminalizing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doc, okay. Yes, Mr. O'Neill?
Not sure if everyone else is gone. Ms. Robinson?
I wasn't sure if Dr. Coleman.
Oh, okay.
No, he's okay. No, he's fine. You are still in though.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone who presented tonight, including all the way back to Dr. Lowe from the Public Health Commission. Thank you for joining us. Just a couple of quick questions and comments. First of all, Mr. Eckelson, welcome back to Boston Public Schools. We're delighted you have rejoined us. And thank you for that part of the presentation. To Mr. Isdell, our Athletic Director, I wanted to say thank you for opening up White Stadium for so many of our high school graduations in June. And it was a great chance for a lot of the Boston community to see White Stadium and to see both how beautiful it is, but also how much potential it has. You know, with a little bit more work to be used for a variety of sports for all of our schools. So thank you. I know you spent an awful lot of time as a parking attendant at all the graduations, but thank you for that. And delighted to hear that we're going to have a full schedule of athletics coming up. Ms. Benavides, thank you for your presentation. And just to help clarify, I think what Ms. Mercer was asking, if you're still available, I did notice as well you had that you said My Way Cafe was going to be thirty-four sites. And I think just to, if you can help us clarify that, I think the superintendent mentioned it briefly, but this is the last year, right, of opening My Way Cafe? So now all of our schools that did not have cafeterias will now have My Way Cafe. So this had been an intentional rollout over, what, like three or four years? And so, correct me if I'm wrong, the thirty-four sites that you mentioned are the new ones, I think the superintendent said, or you said, that were done last year and the construction is finishing this year. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, that is correct, Mr. O'Neil. We have, we built out kitchens in summer of twenty twenty. It's about seventeen locations, which due to COVID, we did not roll out. So we will be doing those this first semester. And as we are also building out eighteen new projects this year. And so the, this, the summer, and those will be rolled out in, starting in January. So this is our fourth endeavor, fourth phase. And I never say never. We never know if another school pops up that we're able to do so, but we have evaluated a lot of locations.
So this pretty much covers all of our schools, right? Have either a cafeteria or a My Way Cafe?
Correct, correct.
The vast majority of our schools.
Yes, even if it is a cafeteria, we do convert it into a My Way Cafe model style of serving. So then they will all be My Way Cafes.
Okay. But this had been a multi-year rollout that was done through an equity analysis, and so that was why the neighborhoods had been chosen, right?
That is correct. We utilize neighborhoods, we utilize socioeconomic status information, participation. We wanted to make sure that our children that are the most impacted and most needy would be able to go first.
Thank you. And I look forward to visiting some of the schools with you this year and tasting the new menu items. They sound, they sound great. I'm looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Before you move on, I also just want to acknowledge the incredible partnership we had with the Shaw Family Foundation in doing the kitchens and the gratitude that we have to them for that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yes, I think we, we accepted the donation at a meeting earlier. Couple, couple of meetings ago, right? And so that was the end of it, I think. It was funny with, with the comment that Ms. Benavides made about hiring challenges. And thank you to each of you who presented, who also said the challenges that you have, because it's helpful for us to know. And I think transportation mentioned it as well about the bus monitors. It did kinda strike me that one of the things we didn't hear tonight was from the Office of Human Capital, how we're doing on hiring overall. You know, for teachers, paraprofessionals, and all the new positions we put in place last year. So if we could get a update on that at some point, Superintendent, that would, that would be great from Mr. Taylor of how we're doing on hiring.
Yep. I, I, that is an omission. I will, I have it sitting right here in front of me because as I was looking through the presentation, it just like dawned on me and that we had put in for transportation and FNS, but not our school-based staff. And we are at about sixty, we have about six hundred and forty-seven out of the seven hundred and sixty-nine teacher and guidance counselor positions that have been filled with an additional forty-seven hires that are currently in process. So that leaves approximately about seventy-five vacancies that we will continue to fill over the next month here. And we are really proud that sixty-one percent of these hires identify as educators of color compared to fifty-two percent of educators hired at this point last year. Thirty-six percent identify as Black African American, seventeen percent identify as Latinx, and seven percent identify as Asian. And two hundred and two hires are external candidates, and fifty-seven percent of the external hires identify as educators of color compared to forty-seven percent of external hires last year. And then seventy-five remain to be filled for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And this is of our guidance counselor and teacher positions. So we have still about seventy-five to go, and we're continuing to work and very proud of our recruitment recultivation office for the work that they're doing with their school leaders to ensure a diverse teacher corps. I will make sure that I, I get that around to everybody.
Thank you, Superintendent. And, and it makes me curious, did we see a higher percent of teachers and professionals retiring this year from what we normally saw? I know there was a lot of concern about coming back to classrooms and, and folks, you know, expressing concern. I'm wondering if we saw, if we end up seeing a higher percent of retirements.
I will bring that back to you. I don't have that number. I am getting weekly updates on our hiring, which I just was giving to you. I don't have the retirement number, but I will get that for you.
Okay, yeah, just for curiosity. And the other piece that I, that I was thinking about as we go on through each of the issues that was so important for our students, and again, thank you for such a thorough presentation, was a little bit more about SEI supports and the emotional supports, quite frank, that we, you know, we're gonna need to really have in place, quite frankly, not only for our students, but for our teachers as well. As we return to a full year, and not just our teachings, our employees. As we refer, return now hopefully to a full year of in-person teaching. There's, you know, it's gonna be an emotional adjustment for our students who luckily started to come back towards the end of last year, but not all of them did. And we heard from some parents tonight who are concerned about their students attending in person. You know, there were still those concerns about it, even as we saw the helpful numbers on, on how COVID is right now. So I'm wondering about, you know, what are we doing on social emotional supports and paying attention to those needs?
Well, that's the top of mind for all of our educators right now, and I know that the BTU is also working with their staff and educators. We've been offering professional development to, to teachers. But I'll have Drew speak to that a little bit more in depth about social emotional learning within his department, if he's still on. Drew?
First, I'm here. I just took a second to get off mute. I think it's, it's a great question, and I don't wanna spoil the next presentation, which I believe is from Jill Carter on health and wellness. And so if we could just hold that, and then certainly I'll be on the call for that touring and follow up on any content that there might be gaps on relative to that question.
Great. Thank you. Perfectly acceptable. And two more quick questions. Superintendent, I'm wondering if you've been given some thinking, particularly for our employees. It's, it's obviously tough to do this for students. But, you know, are we thinking of requiring either vaccines or regular testing? You know, some employers are starting to do that. The federal government is doing it. I know you're probably not quite at that point yet, but, you know, do you wanna share a little bit of thinking about that?
Yeah, sure, Mr. O'Neil. That's a really good question, because we do know, as we heard from Dr. Lowe this evening, that getting vaccinated is the number one way for us to protect the health and safety of our community. And so we continue to encourage everyone to be vaccinated. You know, we really stood up a lot of vaccination clinics early this year, and I give a lot of credit to our partnership with the city and our many health clinics. Mr. DeRugio also stepping up and helping us with his clinic there to offer vaccines real early on to our teachers. Many of our teachers are vaccinated, a very high number of them. However, you know, the statistics run the same as they did with the charts that you saw from Dr. Lowe, where disproportionately, we have less African American and Latinx staff that are vaccinated. And this is particularly true in some units, and so we're cognizant of that. The city is, as you may have heard, the mayor talking about the city mandating vaccines. And they're working through some of that, and what would that be in terms of how we communicate with our unions about that and communicate with our staff? That's BPS and the city, so we will follow what the city does because they are working with BPHC as well. And so we're still working through some of that. I did give a little heads up to my staff today in the central office call that this could be an expectation, so that folks who do have a health concern could have the time to consult with their own health physician as well. So this could come. I, it is not certain as of yet. I am not wanting to get ahead of the mayor and the city on this decision as we coordinate with Boston Health Commission.
Thank you, Superintendent. And my final question is really for Mr. DePina and, and the Superintendent. And thank you for, you know, all the work that's going on to clean the buildings, to do air quality testing in each of the classrooms, to ordering in air conditioning, because we are, you know, more and more gonna have heat. And we're gonna have heat in September. We know it. We're gonna have heat probably in October, and we'll have it in May and June. So I'm glad that's being done. But even as our work is being done in all of our buildings, there were a couple of buildings that obviously, a couple of big building issues that are crying out for. I know the district is paying a lot of attention to it, but in particular, I'm thinking about what's going on with the Horace Mann-Jackson Mann Building for this school year. Even as I know you're working to find swing space ultimately for the Horace Mann. And then obviously, as we heard from a lot of people tonight, and Superintendent, you addressed in your opening comments, you're working with the EMK community. They obviously expressed a lot of concerns about the potential for the endocot. And gave some real specific examples about classrooms and, you know, a bunch of storage space, meeting rooms, et cetera. Real concerns on that, and time is ticking on this, right? We're thirty-plus days away from opening. And, you know, the options of finding another building are probably pretty challenging. So Superintendent or Mr. DePina, I'm just wondering how you're thinking now about these whole building issues versus, you know, all the work you've been doing in our hundred thirty-plus building, so to speak?
Yes. You know, I, I had a meeting earlier, Mr. O'Neil, with the EMK community, as you know. This is an important issue, and we continue to listen to their concerns. We have been exploring multiple options. I actually got on the phone myself several weeks ago and called Pam Edinger over at the Bunker Hill and talked with Joe Berger at UMass to be able to see if there was any on campus with some of our larger universities and community schools, community colleges. And, you know, they didn't have space either, and they are not able to anticipate how many students will be coming back to campus with, you know, COVID kind of in the condition that it is now. So we are continuing to evaluate space with them and trying to find solutions. And then also making sure that the endocot is prepared for spaces. If that means we have to bring in additional portables or whatever we have to do to make that space work for them and to, you know, adjust transportation schedules as well. So the team has been working on it. I committed to meeting with the EMK families and community and educators next week on an update, and we will just continue to try to find the best solution for them. As they stated, you know, they've been in, at Northeastern, and that, that, that was not the best space either for them. And so when the pandemic came, we knew that this was gonna become a difficult situation for them. So, you know, I was thankful to Wentworth for stepping up for us for that one year. And looking forward to a permanent solution. As for the Horace Mann, we hope to make an announcement next week about their permanent swing space. We've been in close contact with the community, as you know. And we're just finalizing some of the assessments of the spaces that we have for them with the, with the PFD at the city.
But would that be for this September or the following September?
Uh, that would be for the following.
Right. So they'll be back in their building this year, and so are we comfortable that, you know, because we've had strong concerns about that building, are we comfortable that building is gonna be able to accommodate them for another year?
We are actually assessing the building again, just to make sure that it is. Because they have also requested to stay at the building another year, so we are assessing that as well.
Excellent, great. And, and with regards to EMK, obviously, the ultimate solution is to find them something contiguous over a part of the LMA, the Lionwood Medical Area, because that's where they have so many of their partnerships and opportunities for their students. Even recognizing that swing space as longer-term solutions or arrived at swing space is sometimes required for a year or two, which is obviously a challenge. If you're a rising junior or senior, there's no question about that, as the Boston Arts Academy students have, you know, had happened the past two years while their new building is being built and the Dearborn students before them, et cetera.
That's right.
Thank, thank you, Madam. Thank, and that's all, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to the whole team for this amazing presentation. I do have a couple of questions. One with regard to transportation. I know last year, we're very happy that we were able to provide on-time transportation for the majority of the time, but our numbers were very small. How are we managing expectation as we go back into having a full component of students riding buses through a now increasingly busy city to make sure that people will be comfortable as we, you know, get back into the full swing of things?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and I'm not sure if Mr. DePina is on, but we, okay, good. We have really been thinking about the possibility that there could be more traffic because, as you know, Delavern and her team have just been phenomenal this year in their on-time performance and really trying to put in place a lot of new, new performance measures, new service quality, working with TransDev and accountability measures. And so we're, we're very proud of the work that the team has done. But we know that things could change with a lot more students on the bus now, and also more stops and more traffic. So Sam, how are we handling that with Delavern and her team? And I know that they're currently routing students.
Right, that's correct, Superintendent. And the only thing I would add to, to your comments is that, just as a reminder, last spring, when we did roll back to full in-person learning, we did experience some level of experiencing our new protocols with TransDev into the later part of the spring, and we were able to see some similar success in reaching our high targets, our on-time performance up into the nineties, the nineties, pretty much on average is what we were doing. So we're hopeful and confident that we'll be able to hit those eventually. And just again, can't say enough about the transportation team and how they really dug into looking at the minutia details of every aspect of our operations. And that's helped to prove significant dividends in, in, in making sure we had a person dedicated to working with TransDev. And that also was, was a huge success of Jackie Hayes. We just shot her out really quickly. And all her work around, really working closely with the company on a regular day-to-day basis. Our team for going out to the bus yards and really supporting them with the work and giving advice to, to the different initiatives. So we're confident, we're, we're constantly cautiously optimistic. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I have a question about academics. I know that in the ESAR Plan, there's a lot of emphasis around new literacy program that would go pre-K to twelve. Will we get a separate presentation that would go more in-depth into what that is and how is either the same or different, or what are its aspects that make this such a wonderful new opportunity for the district?
Yes, that's a really good question, Ms. Robinson, and we are very excited for Drew and his team to present the academic vision and the recovery efforts. We are collecting a lot of that from our school leaders as well, I'll slow down, from their ESAR effort and what they're doing at their sites, as well as our chief of schools, Corey Harris, and the academic regional directors that will be in place to work with school leaders. There will be a lot of support for our school leaders and for our educators around academic literacy. And I would love to bring back more detail on that and maybe some quarterly updates on how that's going with some student formative assessments as well.
Great. And I also, I know we didn't talk about it tonight, but just due to other things we voted on this past year that have academic implication as well. We'd love to hear what we're doing about supporting sixth-grade teachers around the science and social studies. Work that they're doing since our students, this will now be part of the exam schools testing for students. As much as, as we are beginning the rollout of MasCor, what's gonna happen different for this year's seventh graders as they're getting ready to go on the MasCor trajectory?
Absolutely, and we have a lot on our academic plate. And I think coming back in early September or early October with our academic plan is, it would give Drew the time that he needs to really dig in deep with the OEL path forward and also our special ed goals envisioning and what's happening there, and report out on compensatory as well. And how we're doing serving our students with disabilities as well as our EL students in their recovery.
Great. And my last question is more about, is there, I mean, and this may be within Build BPS, is there a master list that's looking at other schools that may be popping up around space needs similar to what we're dealing with with EMK now? I know the Munice Academy has been talking about wanting to expand, and I'm not quite sure if we have a current comprehensive list of have a current comprehensive list of schools looking to expand, et cetera, as well as, you know, getting a Build BPS, you know, review and checklist for every single school. So that, you know, schools don't feel that they don't know where they, they stand. And, you know, I had talked before about, you know, could everybody get an evaluation? And then you would know the sort of the green, yellow, and red repairs. You know, what can we expect right now? What are those longer?